Good morning, everybody. I would like to call to order the work session for May 31, 2019. And it's entitled levy considerations. And so with that, who's going to start us off?
I can just give us a little preface and then Director Hoheisel will. Oh, I don't think I'm on here.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
The first thing we're going to do this morning is take a look at your long-term facility maintenance plan. That's something that we've had lots of conversations about the last year. And if we do the work this year and you're part of prioritizing and really understanding at the front what all those projects are, then that will help your work flow more smoothly throughout the year. And you'll know as projects come forward what they were and why we're doing them and all that kind of thing. We sent the board links to take a look at the information that Director Hoheisel has pulled together for you here. She mentioned that with the long-term facility plan, there is many more projects included than we would expect to do. But the work is to really define what those projects are so that we can move forward in scheduling the work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristin.
Thank you. I do have an enormous, it seems like I have an enormous amount of stuff in front of me. I don't know if the microphone is picking me up, so I will slide it a little bit closer. And please let me know if, and Don, please let me know if you can't hear me. So we are here today to talk levy considerations. The slide in front of you is titled "The Budget Timeline." This isn't a new slide, other than the yellow dot that says you are here. This is the timing of when we start working through the levy information, the levy season, the levy decisions, which ultimately culminates with the truth in taxation hearing in the middle of December. That sets our levy for the following school year. So right now, we're looking at a levy not for the 1920 school year, but for the 2021 school year is the area of which we're talking. First item on the agenda is the long-term facility maintenance. And I would like you to please look at the handout. This information was provided to you at the beginning of May via email form and then discussed at the last School Board Business Meeting. As Superintendent Pontrelli had mentioned, this is a list that has a far greater amount of projects than probably the dollar amount that the board is willing to put on the levy. And so we want to work through and prioritize. Just a few things before we move to tackle the list. Questions that were asked, I'd like to say that the long-term facility maintenance, what's on this list, is not the only work we do. This is work that we levy dollars for, and it replaces like-for-like, meaning we can't put on a new classroom. We can't add anything new. If something already exists, such as a parking lot or a roof, we can replace it, but we can't add new. This also doesn't take into account anything that we do with our capital dollars. So the project is not all-inclusive of all of the work that we will do all year. However, it is what we will levy for. It's certainly your larger dollar amount in scope, and that's what we wanted to discuss. The projects were identified, and I had mentioned this at the last School Board meeting, with, in conjunction with building level administration, so walking the sites and what they saw as work that they would like to have done or needed to have done along with facilities. We look more along the lines of infrastructure, big stuff that needs to get done, whether it's HVAC, or again, parking lots, or sidewalks, or something of the like. And then we bring in, then there's also experts. We have health and safety components. We have, you know, is there asbestos that needs to work? Is there fire marshal orders that are coming through? So we have some industry experts that work with us, too. That's how we work through the projects that are identified. And so I will, other than, I will provide one handout as soon as I can locate it, that the question was presented to me in advance, what have we done? What is the work that we've done in the past? Or what does our levy reflect? And so maybe that gives you a little baseline for work as we move into this levy season. I will have, give this to Tony and pass the rest around. So that's one handout is what has been done. And I've tried to indicate what is, what have been our expenditures per the audit. And what's below it is the revenue request. So the levy season, again, is off, a year off of when we actually spend the money. So hopefully that, I tried to put them in the same column so you could look at the dollar amount.
Kristin, can you wait just one minute?
Sure.
Just so that.
But I just, another handout as that's coming. The other, the other handout is what was done, what the work, what we had anticipated a year ago. I believe this was board-approved a year ago. So I will also hand that out for reference purposes. To, to the first sheet, that was handed out, and if you look at the bottom half where it says revenue per request, in the last handful of years, you can see that we've been right around the mid-to-high $5 million mark. This last year, we were at 7.642. The reason is, and I had spoke to this a year ago, is when you don't spend the money in a particular year, you have what's called a negative adjustment on your levy. So it's kind of always this rolling balance. We knew that we had not spent what we had projected to spend in a particular year. And so we knew, I knew that there would be a negative adjustment, which would bring us down to kind of the $5 million project list. That's why you see the spike. So if you look at what we had levied for, look in, it would be the 1718 area, you see we're close to 2 million the year before that. Those negative adjustments are rolling forward. It finally caught up, and that's why we were able to levy for more without any tax increase. Otherwise, we hold at right, right around the mid-to-high fives, as far as what is usually our levy threshold for projects. So I will turn it over to the board for discussion. If you want to start working through the list, if you want to talk about is there, are we looking for a dollar amount goal? I will look to how you would like to proceed.
Can I ask a quick? So in the, this 1718, we levied for 3.4?
No, that's what we spent. The levy was down below.
5.7.
Correct.
Okay. And so the best of all scenarios, if we were able to do everything, we're going to potentially levy for 8 million more this year.
Yes. And if you look at the bottom of the larger sheet, that, that's the colored sheet, and you can see the total annual planned expenditures, you can see kind of what, where we thought we would be in the plan that was submitted to the Department of Education. So 2020 is the year we levied for last year. That's the 7.642. And you can see, at least based on last year's plan, where we anticipated being the next handful of years, right around the mid-to-high five mark. If that also provides guidance as far as past, what's been done in the past.
So one of the questions I believe you're asking us as a group, are they comfortable with that amount?
Correct.
Mid-to-high?
And it might be because this is the first time we've done this approach in this manner. It might be, again, my, my direction from the, from the board or previous boards has always been try to keep things as a negative impact to our taxpayers. And I know that a negative impact, we are, happen to be in a particular stage of growing our tax base. And so we actually can levy for a little bit more in the impact to each individual taxpayer. They don't feel it because our tax base is growing. That said, if we're going for tax neutrality, you can do at least what you have done in the past. If you are looking and saying, you know what, we're looking at a different direction. Now I just want to review by projects, then you can take that approach as well. So, you know, to me, based on what has been done in the past, it might be easier to identify a dollar amount and then look at the project list, but you certainly can do it the other way.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
So is there, do you have a dollar amount, what would be a negative impact? Like this was the maximum we could do without negatively impacting taxpayers?
I would just say that if you keep it around the, like, the 5, 7 to 6 million dollar range, you would, pretty strong likelihood, you're going to remain neutral.
Okay, thank you.
And again, if it's not, this, you know, lends itself to future conversations that we'll have today. We can always back off of this dollar amount. If the board said, okay, let's say, starting in July, we want 8 million, making it up, right? And then we start, I start seeing runs in September that says, ooh, that might be a little high. You can choose to under-levy and do 5 and 1/2 million. The only challenge, or the only caution with that is, once we get into that cycle, it's going to show up as a proposed increase to your, to the taxpayers. They'll get that in November. They'll see it. It might not be reality, but you're going to get reaction based on the proposed. That's the only caveat to going high to start and then, and then intentionally under-leving later.
Shelley?
So is this what you think is going to be, need to be done over the next, how many years?
I would say that list, I mean.
Because the bottom says total annual 10-year plan expenditures, but I don't, that's probably not.
No, we're, we're, we're setting what we're going to do in the 2021 year. That's it. And in, back to, does this all need to be done? Of course, it all needs to be done. Does painting six classrooms, can we maybe wait for five years to do that? Of course you can. So it comes down to, this list is merely going to reflect the 2021 column, but we, you know, what doesn't make the list, we'll just move on to next year's list.
A question I had in looking at the list itself, and Kristin, I emailed you this a couple of weeks ago, and that is, and I'm not objecting to it, I just want to kind of understand it. It seems to me that if you look at particularly the building we're in, Oak Park, there's something like 1.2 million. And help me understand how you compiled that list, because it's a little bit different than, than some of the other buildings that we're looking at, in that the majority of it is relatively unoccupied, let's put it that way.
Right. The list was compiled based off of, back to how I mentioned, maybe more the infrastructure piece, as far as you have a partial roof replacement. We know that we're coming up on the, the life cycle of a roof. And so this isn't, this is a building of ours that would, that would be on the radar regardless. If we own the building, and maybe you'd see the same with Withrow if that was the case as well. The water main lines, we do also know that this is an area where we've had, and I honestly don't recall flushing or whatever, where as far as lead in the water testing, it's time to replace. You know, see, your, your big dollar amounts are things that are infrastructure. The roof obviously is, you know, that, that can cause more damage, as we've seen, maybe from our statewide counterparts, as far as what does snow look like in any particular year and leaking, as far as future damage. The use of this building, or the direction of use of this building, you know, maybe back to the other things of, this is what we do, would do if we're keeping it up, replacing exterior doors, is it, it needs, it should be done, but there might be projects on that list that you say we don't, aren't a crucial function and we want to.
In other words, what I hear you saying, regardless of what happens with the building, this maintains it as a viable structure.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Said much better than I said it.
Wow, good trip.
So is it better to do, like, you want to focus more on doing all the projects in one building, or that you want to do all the water mains in all the buildings? Is one cost more cost-effective than the other?
Well, we only have two left to do, this one in Stonebridge. So if you want to start, again, back to the.
But something like that. If we were saying replace casework, is it, like, if we picked, replace casework, because that's in a bunch, is it better to do that, like, all the buildings that need casework to do that, or to focus on doing more of the projects in one building? How do you, how have you prioritized that in the past?
We, how we've prioritized this in the past is, is twofold. If we know, we absolutely know we've hit the life cycle of a roof or a parking lot, high-traffic area, that's, that's going on. Then sometimes, again, if we're, and we've always tried to hit a dollar amount, or a range of a dollar amount, then we start going with, okay, we only have space for 60 more thousand, can we bat off a few areas of painting? Or, you know, or just sections at a time, kind of to your point of, you know, you had approved Lake Elmo, or what was done a year ago, and then we just went through that process with Lake Elmo and the casework in the area. Maybe it's identified areas. So we try to hit the infrastructure, you know, need this to run the building first. That's priority. And then it's pockets of buildings that, that we'll go after next, in how it fits into the, the plan. All of that said, just realize the caveat to this entire list, anything can be replaced if an emergency situation comes up. It might just get bumped. And we watch that as, you know, as the years go on, if we have a major system that goes down, something were to happen, the whole list goes on hold because we only have so many dollars to work with to fix and repair. That, just the caveat of it's, it's not just, because if something has to take priority over, it's the emergency situation or the necessity is going to bump the planning of this list.
All right. Kristin, can, can you explain on the table here, the, the difference or our list, I guess? It says district-wide, and there are a number of items listed under district-wide, some of which, as you go through each individual building, then have a, the same entry. For example, replace steam actuators, or at least replace failed steam traps. There's one in Lily Lake, for example. How does, just explain, what, what do you mean by district-wide in the list?
Actually, that is, that is more on the, I'll say, the emergency, back to what Kristin was referring to, repairs of, you know, they have exceeded their budget from, from either this list or their maintenance budget, and we're able to use this as, to fill that in.
So are you kind of betting that one of the schools is going to go wrong?
As far as actuators and controls and, just like, that just is the stuff that comes up and haunts you.
We don't know which one.
Right, we're sure you want to do Lily Lake, but another one's probably going to bubble up at some point.
And so district-wide provides the flexibility to, okay, that actually, we needed that here, but it was in a budget, it just wasn't a holistic budget.
So are you, I'm sorry, are you saying district-wide are things that need to be done quickly, like, that should be top priority?
I would say that would be more in the reserves, if, or not reserve, but just the ability to, to have that ability to make it happen.
So is it like a cushion more, or things you know really are about to happen?
Kind of like an emergency fund.
It's an emergency more, just to have some dollars earmarked for that stuff that you have to do.
So would you recommend in, in any given year, if we're talking about a single year, should it incorporate the entirety of that district-wide budget, or a portion of that district-wide budget?
I'd say the entirety of that district-wide budget, and then if you'd want to back off on the site budgets.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just, like, where do the estimates come from? Just when, per item, just wouldn't you have 60,000 or 120,000? Is that like a firm?
Nope, but budgets are never firm. What it comes from is experience. So we know we're doing casework at particular areas. We've seen the quotes come in. You might add a, you know, 3% to 5% inflation factor, and that's what you roll with. So it, most of it is based off of, this is what it's cost in the recent past to do this similar work.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I just kind of clarify a couple of, like, really basic things about this long-term facilities? Because I think, you know, it's a relatively new concept. It's only, this terminology has only been around for a few years, right, since about 2015, and they combined two other different sources of funding, for the purpose of the community, whoever might be listening. The long-term facilities maintenance, and so I'm going to say it as a statement, but I want you to confirm if that's correct, right? Make sure I get it, I, I understand. So long-term facilities maintenance is only for repairs, basically, and replacing something that needs to be replaced, such as a roof, or a parking lot, or a broken water line, or a security camera, or something like that.
The verbiage is we can replace like-for-like.
Okay. So if somebody wants to put a wall beside a classroom somewhere in the district, and there has never been a wall there of any kind, that does not, is not covered in this fund. So if somebody were to want to put a wall somewhere, for example, just as an example, what kind of funds would that come from?
Capital.
And where does capital come from?
So we have operating capital, it is a state formula, just like general education aid, that is based on, and I honestly, it's a weighting of the students somehow and index.
Based on your population and.
And index of your buildings and.
Stuff like that.
And so you get so much money for operating capital, of which then we use to do those sorts of projects.
Okay. And then, so the long-term facilities maintenance funds, those are coming from, is this 100% local levy?
Yes.
So all of these funds that might end up on an annual budget for long-term facilities maintenance is coming from our local dollars. None of it's coming from the state?
Correct.
Okay.
Whereas, if I can, the, the operating capital fund is from the state, is that correct?
It's, it's an aid levy mix.
Okay.
Okay.
Jennifer?
Thank you. Is the three, the 300K for under-district-wide project design and quality control for buildings, it looks like it's under salary professional? Can you speak more to that? Is that if you, is that a hiring line item, or?
Is that the project designer?
That's your engineers and.
Okay.
What does it mean when it, if you go under district-wide, it says owners representative?
If you need to have a cross Anderson that we've kind of just, somebody to advise, bring in.
What we just did this morning.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So just to clarify a little bit further, so these decisions that we're going to make now are going to be reflected in activities that will happen in 2020, 2021. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So not for this coming year, but for the following year after that?
That's correct.
And they would appear in that budget?
That's correct.
Can, can you speak to your thoughts about if, if we were to go out for an operating levy, or a bond levy for, say, adding on to Brookview or some other facilities, and asking our community for additional funds for something else, such as that? How might that, how might we look at this in comparison with that?
You know, it, it's interesting, and it, and it depends on, on the philosophy of the board at the time and what you're trying to achieve. at the time and what you're trying to achieve. And the reason why I say that is I go back a few years before I took over this position and there's actually a, was a decrease in this fund and in part because money was used to help support budget redu, like, it worked through, I shouldn't say help support budget reductions, it couldn't be, but they're in the, in the scheme of a long-range financial plan, this was reduced to help support levies elsewhere. So, again, back to the tax neutrality of it all, which ultimately then, if it's your operating referendum, it does support the budget on the general fund side, but now you're, you know, reducing what you're doing in your facilities. On the other side of that, back to if you were to look at tax neutrality and knowing that our base is growing, I might look at, if I was doing three years out, I might look and say, okay, to keep the experience neutral, we might actually be able to go higher and back off of this as we move into operating referendum slash bond season, because you don't have the peaks and valleys. And I know Mike had mentioned that when we were, and it was a few meetings ago, I know we were in this space, that if you hold the experience consistent, that's a much easier conversation to have publicly that there, you know, or your, what your impact is. And so, I might actually beef this up, knowing I'm going to ease back to allow for those votes. It depends on the angle you want to approach it.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So, to that point, I think maybe what's more of a priority for us is setting a dollar amount, because this still comes before us no matter what, right? The whole, we adopt the whole long-term facilities maintenance, but we don't know, I haven't seen the casework, I don't know what, which casework needs, you know, has higher priority. But maybe first we need to figure out what we want to levy for and what's the impact to our community and then they can do more of the prioritizing.
But I think to get back to something you said earlier when we started off, this is why you went as high as 6 million, because of potential increase in value in the district.
Yes, and there are, again, I mean, there's many, gosh, the levy, the levy document that I look at is 34 pages of formulas. And there's areas where, back to, there's adjustments made based, based on all of that. And as I'm watching, I can react quicker when I'm just reducing as opposed to, so if you, if you're looking to keep the experience, I'd say you err on the side of going a little bit higher. We can always, even as I'm seeing things before it comes in September, I can always ease off of that a little bit. And if it keeps your experience, knowing that in two years, maybe whatever you're considering, whether it's an operating referendum, I mean, maybe an increase is okay with the public or if it's building bonds, then we look and say, okay, what's our strategy for the whole levy? Because again, none of this, much back to even the budget conversation, is mutually exclusive. It has to be the big picture, it has to be. And what is the goal and what do we think we can get support out of? So, I would say, I would err on going a little bit higher, maybe around this 6 million mark, knowing that I can still make adjustments off of that. That would just be food for thought.
And is this prioritized at all in terms of safety or emergency things that need to be done first?
So, it, when you reference safety and emergency, and I know that there was a question as far as security improvement recommendations, if it's in place and it needs to be done, you, you know, on there, it's, you know, it's security cameras, some of our cameras, they're just old and they don't have the resolution and they don't have different things. And so, it would work to help with that. As far as new security, we can't do that, that can't be a part of this. So, if it exists, we can replace it and then that gets prioritized. But if we were looking at an entirely new system, and I'll say, one of the things when we were in the grant cycle a year ago for security was having automatic bells, if you will, like on all high school doors, so there's a notification going to the front office if a door is propped open. We don't have that in place and so we can't add that to this. Do I believe that could be a good security enhancement? Sure, but it's not what we can do with this list today.
Right, I really meant just like building safety, like, or their thing, yeah.
Yes. So, we would, I mean, again, if the, and what we've done in the past is we've gone through because we know, you know, back to maintaining a nice functioning, operating building, that's what this list addresses and we would prioritize based on how quickly we thought that needed to, something needed to be replaced.
Along those same lines, both you and I were at sea when Tom Melcher presented, and I believe there's $30 million set aside for safety in all the districts in the state. Will that impact this?
No, and that caveat, and now I'm giving away our presentation on the 13th, which seems to lack the buildup. Spoiler, you're getting at it, you're getting at it. What if the state has a budget surplus?
That's right.
Then there will be money that gets applied to the security component where everybody will get something. If, and I want to say it's, I had, no, the magic, the magic number, and I could pull it up on my computer because I have it, the magic number of surplus, and I'm guessing right now is, let's say the state's surplus is $600 million, then that's the full amount because it gets prorated, anything less than that magic number, the most we would get is $36 per student. That would add to, and then we could do, I mean, we're already spending more than that. That would be new, that would be new. It's one time, but it would be, we could do something with that.
And there's no grant process?
No, correct.
And this is potentially what you could get, but that could affect what you do in the buildings.
It could, and, but and what happens there, and you know, this is part of it as well, kind of a consideration of even as we work through the 15 bond, once it's in place, then you can replace like for like because it's in place, you just can't start there with this money.
Right, and that $36 would be about close to $300,000 for us, which sounds significant, but then when you look at some of the security, just the replacement things, you can see pretty quickly, replacing something at the, you know, district wide, the security cameras and the system controls would take that right away. So, it still doesn't allow you to do a lot with infrastructure as far as like Rutherford with closing doors, electronic doors and that kind of thing. It'll be something, but not have a huge impact. I just don't want the community to think we're going to get this big chunk of money possibly and be able to do all kinds of things, it'll be pretty minimal impact to our system.
It's 30 million divided by what, 373 districts or so?
And chart, well, charters might be in the mix in that as well.
They are, yeah.
So, a really minor question, but that bathroom in the high school closest to the office, is there anything in the works for that? Like, everything's really old in there, the sinks are really old, I don't like it. Is there anything in there that?
Prioritize bathrooms.
We really have to have the bathroom conversation here.
Fine.
I'll just go on record saying I support your thoughts about improving the quality of our bathrooms. I think that says a lot about the quality of the building. The entrance, you know, first impressions are really important and bathrooms are important, I think.
Although I will say at the PAC, it's lovely that you never have to wait, I don't think, in line, because there's plenty of.
There's plenty.
So, that's good.
Oh, my gosh.
But that other one, I just.
Now, we have something new to compare them to, so it's a little, a little even worse, yeah. So, would it be helpful for you to come to an agreement on what you think the, like Shelley said, the levy amount should be? Then your experts can take that and say, all right, if this is the dollar amount in there, because they are right there in the throes of things and know really priority-wise what needs to be a priority, they pull that together and then bring that back to you and say, for your 5.7 to 6 million, here's what we can accomplish and here's our recommendation. And then, I think, also, I don't mean to cut you off early, if there's any question about some of these things that you have, pretty, I think most of them are fairly self-explanatory, but if there's any other questions so that you feel comfortable with what they're prioritizing.
Shelley?
Yes, I, I think that would be good for us to do. I think also it'd be good to say, we would like priority on the safety and security things that are in the list and then see where it goes.
Can I just ask one more quick question? So, is there a maximum amount that we're allowed to levy for long-term facilities based on like pop, student population or anything like that? We can, the sky's the limit, we can go as much as we think our community would support.
We were, you knew and referenced that it changed, right? The legislation changed and became categories. We are a grandfathered district because we were an alternative facility district that qualified to be able to do this type of funding before. And so, because we're grandfathered, it, there, we don't have a limit. Other districts do, we're just not one of them.
Okay, interesting.
And I'm sorry, we're grandfathered because what did you say?
We were, yeah, it was the big 21 is what we were called, there were, essentially, it was like us, Duluth, the big districts throughout the state, just given the number of buildings and our student population, we were entitled to funding before this became available for all of the districts to keep up with just the, the amount of sites that we had. And because we were that, when legislative changed and gave this opportunity to all districts in the state of Minnesota, we received the same, because at that time we could have levied for whatever, we received the same rights that we had had before they changed the funding mechanism for the state.
Thank you, okay. And so, what is the limitation for somebody that wasn't an alternative facility?
That one is based off a formula and I honestly don't pay attention to it because it's not us, but it's a, I'm guessing it's 100 and, it's less than 200, I believe, per student in particular districts that they, unless they do, they can bond, I mean, and we can bond as far as, you know, if we're looking at, we want to do 20 million and we're just going to take a big sweep, we could bond for that money and take our time doing it, we just do a pay as you go, is the way we do it right now.
Okay.
So, would it be an accurate reflection that you were hinting at possibly 6 million? Would that meet your expectations? Is that a workable figure?
Yes, that's, that is a workable figure. Like I say, it would only be that if you want to, you know, and again, that maybe it's a bigger conversation as we move forward, kind of to Sarah's point about what is, is there a strategy involved as far as, what do we put this as, as we lead into?
So, you're saying wanting to build up to decrease, that could be a strategy?
Well, yeah.
Well, till we look at all of the various levies?
Yes.
That might be a placeholder at this point.
So, what's others appetites for?
Well, and what we're saying is that this estimated 6 million would, would remain a tax neutral option.
I'm saying I believe it would, yes.
Right, okay.
But if you go back to 13, 14, I mean, it looks like we were at 2, 9, then 5, 7, then 2, 5, 2, 9, 3, 4, I mean, this is quite a bit higher than it was just.
That's what we spent.
It was, but, but remember, I, that was, that was levy season for our operating. And so, you know how I mentioned when we first started talking about sometimes there's a different strategy involved, that that was actually significantly decreased to support an operating referendum. So, I caution you to go back to 12, pay 13, because we were coming into an operating question at that time and other levy components were adjusted to support. So, again, at least your most recent past would indicate we have a trend in the 5 million. That one was a, not that it was an anomaly, but it was less, there was different financial strategies at that time, is the easiest way to say it. I would not say, and I can, and Tony, I'll look to you to either confirm or deny this, I would not say that that dollar was keep, that dollar amount levy was keeping up with what we needed. We were falling behind in our repair and maintenance of the building, of the buildings at that dollar amount.
Okay.
And I recall that when old architects and engineer did the last study, they recommended at least keeping it at 7 million for a district this size, and that was five years ago, so as inflation comes around, otherwise you're just going to be going backwards.
Well, in the, it seems to me the offsetting on that too is the district valuation, as you referenced earlier. Because if you're frugal, in the long run, you can get penalized because of that. Because especially if you're looking at peaks and valleys, that will cause some.
Yeah, I just, I think, I mean, I think we're at a time, maybe we're always at this time, where we need to demonstrate clearly to our community that we're being very effective and efficient with their, with their taxpayer dollars, you know? So, that's just the only caution I have is, you know, we don't, we don't want to be too far either one way or the other. We don't want to go too far, we don't want to be too low, right?
I wouldn't be comfortable going anything over 6.
Yeah.
It is a good message though to say the sky's the limit, like we could.
So, we're being responsible.
But we really want to be wise with the community's money.
So, and then what would the mechanism be for, say, let's say we, we approve like a $6 million number, at what point might we say, you know, let's come back to this and say, let's, let's cut this back and let's not go for, but, you know, at what point do we have a conversation where we say, look, by the time that, that year comes around, we actually don't want to spend that full 6 million because of, for whatever reason?
You have until the December, your December 19.
Of next?
Of this year.
This year, this fall.
Once you set that levy in December, that's, that's what you, now again, the projects may change, but that's the dollar amount you own.
Yeah.
Going into 2021.
And, and so, what happens if you levy for that amount and you actually end up not spending it all?
Then that's the negative adjustment on the next levy.
That's what you're talking about, right, okay.
And that's where we run into, I mean, all, the hardest part, and I always struggle with this, explaining it, is that, yes, it looks this way, but there's a negative adjustment coming in. And every year, there's, you know, it's either, it ebbs and flows and it's student, I mean, you name it, any part of our levy, I can be seeing that and saying, yes, the 7 million, I remember having this conver, yes, the 7.6 is super high compared to what you're used to, but there's a negative adjustment that'll, because we didn't get the projects done by June 30th of a particular year. It's a timing thing and that's the hardest piece of levy stuff and certainly the hardest piece of this, because if we just hit in July instead of June, it looks different.
Yeah, yeah.
But for today's discussion, we're going to look at a lot of other levies as well, potentially, yes or no?
Yes.
So, if that is almost like a placeholder at this point, then by the end of our session, then you're putting it in comparison, do you still feel good about that?
So, what I'm, oh, I was just going to say, this is a little bit off topic, but I was just going to say, actually, District 916 is going through this exact same process. I think at our next meeting, we will be doing this work, certifying the levy for the coming, for this coming year. And I think most of their buildings are brand new, so they really don't have a lot of needs and they're trying to be really careful with all their partner districts. So, their amount is only like 700, I think it's like $750,000 is all they're asking. And then we only have one portion of that, so, but we all will have to approve that. So, that's going to be coming up in one of the Junes.
It's that, that is at the June 13th meeting, the, the interesting piece of that, and it always is, and honestly, it would come from our district as well, is absolutely true, that piece of it for them is low. The debt they took out to build those buildings is high. So, the, the impact to the member districts, you know, it's not like, oh, we're feeling a sense of relief, they switch categories on us, is about what, is about what happened. So, and again, that's part of their plan and 916 wants to keep everything as neutral for their member districts as well. It's just back to you can't ever just look at a single line item because it's never a single line item.
Right, right.
Okay?
Okay, you were going to say something, I think.
I was just going to say, so am I hearing, stay in the area of 6 million and we will work on kind of the prioritization of the list and have that then coming forward, barring any, you know, as we move forward, the levy conversation.
So, we will approve this 10-year plan, that's how we are able to do the levy, we have to have a 10-year plan, we have to approve it every year. But when will we actually see what we're going to spend this year or, you know, for the year we're talking about?
We will, we will adjust this list and as soon as Tony and I have the opportunity to sit down and work through it, I'll email it to you and then it would be at the June 13th agenda, it would be on that agenda as well.
Yeah, and it would be appropriate at that point, whatever priorities you end up with, for this group to say, well, gee, why this and not this?
It would, yeah, it would.
That'd be great.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Round two.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, I will move into, as we continue to talk about levies, the OPEB or QComp levy. Again, OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefit. And QComp and the impact. The next two slides, the first slide you can see is the homestead residential, the different market values that those homes have, and the estimated impact depending on how much were to be levied. So we range from $100,000 to $1 million in $100,000 increments, what the impact is should you do this levy. So if we were to look at, for example, residential homestead of $300,000, and looking at what we currently do for OPEB, and we're just shy of 800,000, I want to say this, last year's levy was 774. If you were to look in that category of 800,000 to levy for OPEB, it's $23.03. That would be the experience to our taxpayer. And then this slide is just, is to provide the commercial, industrial, and what the impact could be for those properties as well. We've had this discussion before. I don't know that we've had it since the new board members have taken their seat. The graph in front of you now shows if, if a $300,000 residential property in Stillwater or in the Stillwater Area Public School District, what that house pays for school taxes is $1,115. OPEB, and you can see in the upper right corner, is in black because it already exists. So the impact that you had seen before, it says, yes, that's what we would anticipate you're paying for OPEB, but it's already included now in, in what the taxpayer is paying because we, we did this a year ago. If you were to choose to levy for QComp, there would be, for a $700,000, or excuse me, a $300,000 home, there would be just over a $20 increase for that. So we would go up to $1,135. If we, now, this graph is just a good, I think, visual, visualization that if we were to pick up our $300,000 home in Stillwater, and we were going to move it over to Woodbury or South, the Woodbury portion, the South Wash County School District portion of Woodbury, what our taxpayers are paying for school taxes is almost, eh, about $900, almost $1,000 less than what their taxpayers pay on a $300,000 home to support their schools. Now again, this isn't what the schools collect. This is what the homeowner experiences for school taxes. Another visualization that is, believe it or not, out of date, because the color coding changed due to the legislative session, but again, I just think it provides at least an understanding of where we are. Both now, the black and the tan are combined. The, the, the local school board approved revenue, that's a $300 component. The board did that this year to remove it from our referendum. The state now combined it with local optional. So with new legislation, it'd all be black, the tan wouldn't exist, but the doll, the dollar amounts don't change. But you can see where we are today, the, what we're looking at, and then where the red, which is your operating referendum, where that drops off. That is, that is the intent of this slide, just to provide a, provide a visualization for how close we're coming to needing a decision to renew our operating referendum or add The referendum election timing, again, I want to say that this chart has been in front of you before. It has, Krista confirmed. And it's the different types of referendums and when you can go out. The last chance to renew the operating is, the operating referendum is November of 2021 without experiencing a financial gap. So I believe the board is looking to discuss both levying for OPEB and levying for QComp. And I guess I will open up the floor to that.
Liz?
So if we renewed OPEB and didn't add QComp at this time, it would be tax-neutral?
It, it would be what the taxpayers have already experienced, yes.
If no one else has a question else. For the purpose of the audience and maybe for the new, new board members, can you explain what the OPEB trust fund is, how it was established, and a little bit about that, how it's used for paying off our OPEB?
Sure. So again, other post-employment benefits, if you go back, we had had, and I don't remember what meeting it was, Jill Erdal was here presenting the actuarial study findings. And most of the components of that actuarial study are essentially retiree health. That is what our OPEB is. It's to cover the district's liability of that implicit rate, the explicit rate, anything that the retiree health is doing moving forward. Back in 2008, 2009 legislatively, then there were accounting standard changes, there were, I would say, nationwide changes that all of a sudden, kind of the tails of prior agreements came to light. And nationwide, it was, you know, you might, what's reflected on your financial statements doesn't show your true liability because you committed to severance packages and different things that last for a very long time, and you're not reflecting the, maybe the multimillion or billion-dollar appropriations that you've already set forth because financial statements reflect a year. And at that time, it was said, nope, we're going to change the accounting standards because you have to start accounting for future liabilities. It's reality. You've already made the commitment. Yes, it might not be this year, but it's what's coming. So what happened in the state of Minnesota is, back in eight or nine, school boards were given the option of, do you want to set up a trust to help offset that deferred liability? And Stillwater did that. And at that time, we took out $20 million of debt over 10 years, and we put that.
That was voter-approved, right?
That was non-voter-approved.
Oh, that was a non-voter-approved levy?
It was. Yeah, at that time, we could do that, non-voter-approved. That's how the legislation had set it up.
Okay.
They changed that because a lot of districts took advantage of that, and I think there was a lot of feedback from constituents. Anyway.
That's a huge amount. Huge amount of money, right?
Yes.
For a one-time deal.
Yes.
Yeah.
And again, it got, it got, much like any debt, it got spread out over 10 years.
Right.
But still, so we established a trust for about $20 million. And so every year, when we go to pay these costs, and the mix has changed, but we've taken some money out of the general fund to pay for those costs, and we've taken some money out of the trust. And where, where we're at now is we're taking about $1 million a year to support that expenses out of the trust. And we have just over, audited numbers last year, I want to say, were $8.3 million. So we've got, at $1 million a year, give or take, if we were to continue to draw down on the trust, we have eight to nine years left, and, and the trust is done, is gone.
The amount is shrinking.
The amount is shrinking.
The amount we have to pay out for OPEB is shrinking, right?
Well.
It depends on how.
It depends.
People retire and how old they are.
Yes, that depends. Ultimately, yes. But I would say, in the next 15 years, we're going to hold pretty constant, and then there'll be a drop-off. Because what has happened is employee contracts, with being able to do the OPEB trust, you, you had to get through your employee contract language that there would be a sunset on retiree benefits. And that sunset went into play, and so in another 15 years, people aren't, you know, your staff is not going to be eligible, which then, and the ones that were are going to have phased through. And so that's when your liability really drops off. It's just, I mean, it goes out the next 40 years, the liability does, but it starts to shrink considerably as we, as we move along. So when you look and say, okay, we've been, and you can draw from the trust as much as you want, but the decision at least a year ago was, we're going to take $1 million from the trust, and the rest we're going to support with a levy. Because the debt that we took out for the trust, the 10-year debt, is gone. So we've essentially replaced what the taxpayers were paying to support the debt to establish the trust with the pay-as-you-go levy piece, the annual piece, to take the pressure off of our general fund. So we pay $1 million out of the trust, and we pay $500,000 to $1 million. And I want to say, in Ms. Erdal's presentation, I think she estimated we'd be just around 800,000, maybe a little bit more, you know, for the implicit rate that we could levy for to support. And that keeps it entirely then away from our general fund because we're either levying or taking out of the trust. So that decision was made a year ago. Again, we were just shy of 800,000. In, assuming we keep the same methodology in eight to nine years, we could have a million and a half to $2 million liability that then, you know, does that go on to the taxpayers? How does that, you know, how do we support that? We can always go now to do a new lump sum, but then it becomes, that is voter-approved. So if we said, you know what, we just want to get, we want to fully fund this thing in a trust, and we need another $30 million to do that, we could do that, but then that needs to go, that needs to go to the voters. We can't do that anymore as non-voter-approved.
Shelley?
So you probably already said that, this, but how much is left in the trust right now?
Eight, three? Give or take?
Tina?
Can you talk a little bit about the need for the additional QComp request?
I, I am not going to, I'm not your speaker for the QComp.
Okay.
I'm, I'm your girl for OPEB, but I'm going to pass it over for QComp.
Okay.
I can talk impact.
Stick on OPEB for just a few more minutes and then go to.
That's what I was going to say, too. Stick with that one first. We can always reference back from the opening of the one as well. Other questions on OPEB?
Can I just have a follow-up question? So basically, what I, if, I think I understood you correctly, that the, the initial amount, we issued debt and we were paying off that debt until when? Like last year or the year before?
Yeah, it just, it expired within the, I mean, it might have been a levy cycle removed.
So, so that would have, that would have been, that would have been something that taxpayers would have seen an impact on in their tax statement.
Right, it would have decre, it, their.
And then when that ended, that would have been at least a, a drop-off.
Correct.
To some amount. And so then, when we levied last year, we levied the amount that they would have seen to keep it neutral or something less than that?
Well, I would say, let, let me back up a little bit, because now that I'm thinking. So when, when we structure the debt, and again, if we were to, in, in this, we actually have a refunding that's available to us now. When you structure your debt, we structure it in its entirety. And so we're looking at the debt that we still have for the 97.5 million. We have a crossover debt that existed, I want to say, in 2010 that's still out there. And then we have our certificates of participation for the early childhood building. And at that time, we had, you know, debt for the trust. What might have happened, so I'm going to, I'm going to back up because I'm going to say I'm not certain to my prior answer. What might have happened is, knowing that the OPEB debt was going to expire, we might have backfilled other debt. So the way you structured the 97.5 million might have already covered that, and then the, and which is now what I'm inclined to believe, that the OPEB was an add. Because as you structure the big scheme of debt, you make greater payments to somewhere else. You know, it's like your car and your house. If all of a sudden your car gets paid off, you're making more payments to your house to keep that debt equal. We do the same thing typically with all of our debt. And so, and I'm just going to use this as an example, we have an opportunity to refinance that would save us about $600,000. But what would happen is that savings then, it would save the taxpayers because the length of the debt would, you know, they're just going to pay 600,000 debt less in the long run, but it doesn't necessarily impact the immediate levy. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And so I believe what happened now in retrospect is that when the trust got paid off, we backfilled it, so we're not paying, you know, interest for other debt longer than we need to. And then the, what you levied for last year was an add, but because of the tax base increase, the experience, you didn't feel it.
Right.
It was like your exposure to feel it was $20 if you had a $300,000 home, but I'm guessing that most of those $300,000 homes didn't have that impact. I mean, those are the things we don't control. You just have to know that the max that that could do is this dollar amount, barring what happens to their market value and their assessment and.
Well, that's, so that's what I was pulling up, is ours. And so that's something to consider, too, is looking at what's going to happen. And on mine, then the voter-approved goes up by quite a bit, the non-voter-approved drops. So it's close, but it's, there still is an increase, so to consider that, too, when we're trying to decide whether we go for more.
Yeah, and there is pieces of the levy of, of, for the taxpayer, I mean, that we don't control. So if you're, if you have a $300,000 house and you stayed at 3, but your neighbors had a $300,000 house and they went down to 250, you, you get more of the pie. And, and we just don't get to control that. So that's why it's presented to you to just say, this is, this is that piece of it, are you willing to at least add another $20? It might be less, and, you know, but we don't, it might be more based on market value and what happens, but that's your, that's our best estimate of what it costs.
Liz?
When the 20 million trust was set up, that was what year?
I think it, it was eight or nine. I think it was nine, but it's right in the crux of those years.
And, and we came out, if I remember when Ms. Erdal came, can't think of her first name.
Jill.
Jill. She said we did better this year, right? We came out a little bit ahead of what expectations were in terms of the finances in that trust.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I want, I mean, and she was looking at it, and she said, you know, I want to say was, high 40% of our liability is funded, is the way she presented it.
Yeah. So like, one option we have is to pull all of these, all of the costs that we have for this coming year, or for the year that we're looking at, this is 2020, 2020, 2021.
And it's what your taxpayers would pay in calendar year 20?
20. So not this coming year, but a year from now. So the options are, pull all of the money that it costs from the trust. And if we did that year after year after year, we have a little over 8 million, we'd be without a trust in about four years. So then, we would have the option, I'm just, you know, throwing it out there, that we'd have an option at some point, too, when we go out for operating levy, to include that as part of the voter-approved operating levy. We could potentially put it in there to replace the trust, to add, to, to establish a new one or add to it, or I don't know how that works, but.
As an OPEB.
Would that be a separate question?
It would be a separate question, because if you, if, let's say if you said we would just want to increase our operating revenue, our operating levy by 500, you, you're going to be restricted by a cap. So, because you can only ask for so much in the operating.
Okay.
So I would strongly suggest that if that's the route you're taking.
Uh-huh.
You do it as a separate question.
Okay. And we, and so we could do that at any point in, in, at a November election, right? I mean, any year, we could do that separately if we wanted to.
Because the, the operating levy is a general fund, right? It's, yeah, a general fund. So in terms of like restoring a trust, that would be a separate question.
Right.
It wouldn't be part of the operating levy question.
But we could go for it at the same time, I think.
At the same time, or anytime, right?
Well, and you. Take operating funds and add to the trust? Is that something that you can do or?
Well, you wouldn't need the trust, you'd just use the, and that's what I was going to say, you would just then use the, like, if you, if you earmarked and said, we're going to increase our operating referendum by $300, but that $300 is going to support OPEB, you don't need the trust, it's just going to be supporting OPEB.
Yeah, yeah.
Does, if you do that, say you went with this proposed amount, $20 plus, et cetera, does that affect the operating?
Well, I mean, if you, let's go this way, if you said with OPEB, we're not going to levy this, for the next cycle, I need to somehow now figure out where 800,000, 750,000 is going to come from. Is it the trust or is it the general fund? Because those would be my two options.
See, that's what I kind of want to do for this group, is lay out the advantage or disadvantage of either choice.
The amount that is being requested for the OPEB levy is, I think, actuarially, you can confirm this, so that it is neutral on our liability between an amount that we would pay on the, from our trust. pay on the, from our trust, as well as what we would earn from the, from the taxpayers on, on the levy. So that we would be, I mean, what, I guess the question is, how is the amount determined on the OPEB levy? What, what is the...
So what had happened a year ago is the school board had said, we, Kristin, will go up to a million. And then the state comes in with a formula and says, oh, that's all well and good, but, you know, they take the implicit rate factor and they take different things, and they say, that's all well and good, but you can only get 774.
That's right.
But there's a maximum.
Got it. And they determine that. I was just given the up $2 amount.
Yeah.
If you say levy as much as we can, then that's what I'm going to do. This year, it happened to be in that range. Next year, again, based on Jill's presentation, we're probably in the high eights, but it's in that range.
Got it, thanks.
So we could, we could potentially levy, say, 500,000 or something. And then, I think we talked about this one time before, we could do none, we, OPEB, you know, non-voter-approved levy, zero. We could do 500,000, we could certify the maximum, and then that gets determined by the state. Or we could, yeah, so I guess that's the only options, something other than the maximum, something less than the maximum. And then we could say, if, let's say we did 500,000, then the rest would come from the trust, or something like that.
If you told me that, or it's coming from the general fund, yes.
Yeah.
If we, if we certify the maximum, and we go up, and apparently it's in the range of around 800,000, it would be approximately neutral for the taxpayers' impact. What they would see in terms of what, what was their liability this year, and we're talking about not next year, but 2020, it would be about the same.
That's correct.
Depending on, of course, the number of houses that are built and everything else.
That's correct.
Right.
And based on that theory and what we talked about earlier, we could potentially certify the maximum now, knowing that that's for 2021. And then in '21, if we go for an operating levy renewal, voter-approved operating levy renewal, we could choose not to at that point. And then we could choose not to do a non-voter-approved levy, and then that would come off. So it would have a less of an impact on our taxpayers.
I, I'm getting lost on the ti, I understand, in theory, I agree with you, I'm getting, I'm getting a little bit mixed up on the timeline. You will set this levy in December.
Uh huh.
So that, that's there. If in the, if you go out to the voters in '21, and let's say that impact doesn't come until calendar year '22.
Right.
Then yes, you can make the adjustments the following summer. I just don't wanna make it sound like you can still adjust the work that we're doing past December, because you can't, but then it's when, when the next election comes and what gets approved, and when that takes place, every year you review this.
Right.
So...
And don't lose that thought, but if you, first step to keep it relatively neutral would be what Mark described.
Yes.
So, yeah, so just to your comment earlier, you know, it's a, as you can probably tell with this conversation, it's really, it's a tricky balance, because we've got the trust that's going down, we've got the effects on the general fund, and we don't know exactly what, what are, where our numbers and where our limits are. So it's, it's a, and that's, the conversation is just the balance of that. So we always have to keep in mind the impact on general fund as well as the trust.
My question is, when you said, go for the, now, this is new, go for the max, or, or something like levy or ask for the max with the OPEB? What is that? I, I missed that.
Uh, maybe it's verbiage. So what it was, was a year ago, I, you said...
We did the 1 million.
We said 1 million, and we can only do 774. The state capped us there. So you gave authority more than what we were even allowed to do. As I entered into that information.
Okay.
So maybe the max, again, maybe it was a bad terminology, the, the maximum that the board set for me to do my work was a million dollars.
Okay.
The amount we could do was 774.
Okay.
And when we made the decision last year, we thought we could levy the whole thing if we wanted, didn't we?
Well, we had the conversation, and based on, you know, pri, again, the numbers change every year, based on prior year, it says, I believe we could get up to here. I don't know that it was ever like, this is exactly where we're going to be.
So by saying we're, we're approving a million, we are essentially certifying the maximum amount.
Our maximum.
What's set by the state.
Right.
The, the maximum that the state will allow is what we...
800,000.
Was like 774.
Yeah, you're, when you say the ma, I mean, it's, there's two different maximums. When you set the maximum in September, that's the state work, and then there's levy adjustments and whatever. In this conversation that we're having now in June and in July, of what, in same as what we had last year, I'm viewing that as, you're saying, Kristin, kind of back to even the, the, the long-range, the project plan. We're giving you up to here. You know, it might not end up here, but this is what we want you to enter the data as. That's, and so when I started entering the data to the state, I'm assuming that I'm up to a million, and the state's coming back and saying, based on all of your calcs, you can only do this. Fine, got it, we go.
So what, when we did that, what appeared on the taxpayers' statements in the fall?
The 770...
So you, by, by the time those forms go out, they actually do know what the...
Oh, yes, yes. As a matter of fact, when you're, when I'm presenting the preliminary levy to you in September, those are, we know those numbers then. I'm seeing those numbers in, at the end of August.
Okay.
Okay. What do you need from us?
Nothing. I will just be looking, I will be looking for board action on, is it the intent to levy for OPEB again for the 19 pay 20, which is the 2021 cycle? I'll be looking for, Kristin, I will, I will be looking for direction if that's an, a cell input that I put in, in July's levy cycle.
And I think what's very important to include there is just a note, so collectively, we don't forget that. That's gonna be relatively tax-neutral. I think that's an important ingredient.
Yeah, can you remind us, what did we do the year before that?
There was no, we didn't not levy.
Didn't do any, right? So last year was the first time we levied for OPEB.
Correct.
The year before that, we did zero.
Correct.
And we pulled completely everything we needed that year out of the trust fund.
No. We did a trust, general fund split.
Oh, we did, okay. So this past year is the first year we've had no impact from OPEB on the general fund.
Correct.
And this would retain that.
If we approve, if we approve, the same.
When, and when you say this year?
Like for 2021.
1920s.
Yeah.
That's in our budget now, that we won't have that, that expense in our budget for 1920, because you did the work last summer.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Should we go to the second part then?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
QCOM.
And I can maybe start with that a little bit. If you go back to the bar graph with the QCOM, what we're doing here today is laying out options and making sure you have all the general information for your levies. Many times you talk about, all right, how can we bring revenue in the district? What are our options? And QCOM is another means that we have for bringing funds into the district. And let's see, five, six years ago, the district started working on a plan with our SCEA to submit to the state to be able to have funding for QCOM. There is a local levy that actually, Stillwater is the only metro district that doesn't do a local levy for QCOM. And out of 195 districts statewide, there are only two others that don't, Hutchinson and Bemidji. Hutchinson has about 2,300-plus students, and Bemidji's about 5,700. So we're by far the largest district that participates in the QCOM program that doesn't access the dollars for extra funding through QCOM. And so what you see on the right-hand side of that sign is, or side, is just that we could access an additional amount of funding, which would have an impact of about $20 per household on a $30,000 home. That is an option.
I think it's the, what needs to be explained, or probably should be explained, particularly for people that are listening, is then, what could that money be spent on, right? Because it's, it's much like what Kristin explains with categorical aid, it can only be spent on certain stuff. So I think it's important to clarify that if, if the board were to say, we wanna levy whatever amount, the, because we could levy for an additional $91 per student, is what would get us to the maximum on that previous slide, or next slide, I can't remember, 746-ish. We currently, from the state, because we're approved, we get $169. That's what gives us our budget of roughly 1.4 million right now, is right around in there is what we collect. So again, it's based on, it's based like everything else, on the student October 1 count of the year previous, multiplied by that 91, gives you the, the budget. All that said, right now, so the, there's four components to QCOM. One are these career ladder positions. So you've got your QCOM lead, you've got instructional coaches, you've got the QCOM teacher board members, you've got special education site coaches, and site PD consultants, and then some mentoring. So it could, you could support that piece of it. Currently, those, those jobs, that area, those get paid out of QCOM dollars. So they don't get paid out of...
General.
A general fund, except for, this is where the instructional coach piece comes in, is we have instructional coaches that are paid for directly out of QCOM, but we had instructional coaches before QCOM. And so if you remember back to when we had the conversation about professional development and what we're gonna use that money for, what's left in the professional development fund, general dollars, a lot of that next year is going to be to pay for two instructional coaches. Because as a QCOM board, we agreed for one year to pick up an additional coach out of the QCOM dollars, because we had the money in there to do it. So typically, there's three coaches that get paid for out of the professional development fund, and then there's one that we pay for out of the achievement integration dollars. So why that's important to note, I think, back to the question as you posed it, Tina, was the impact you could have by levying, based on how we're currently set up, is you could levy dollars to offset what's being paid out of achievement and integration, and what's being paid out of professional development, and say, we wanna levy dollars, but we're gonna levy those dollars to pay for those instructional coaches, so everything's getting paid out of QCOM. Any other dollars that you would bring in would not have any impact to the general fund. They would go to support whatever else you'd want to do with that QCOM program. So it would be in addition to, but the, you, we can't, it's a lot, it gets confusing a lot like with the other levy dollars, because it's, it has to be spent on career ladder, job and credit, professional development, the T, the TDEP, teacher development and valuation, and then the performance pay. If you add to it, you're, you're either adding to those four, or you're saying, we're gonna put, we're gonna relieve the achievement integration dollars, because we wanna spend those monies on something else. We're gonna relieve the professional development budget, because we wanna maintain that for other stuff. So I think, and, does that make sense? To answer your question, why would you levy? I think the first question is you to answer is, back to the philosophy of long-term facility maintenance. As a board, do we wanna not pay anything out of general fund or other categorical aid to support QCOM? Then you would say, well, the only way we're gonna get there is to levy more dollars to do that. Or do you wanna add to whatever the QCOM is currently doing? And, and then again, it isn't an, an either-or, it's up to, you can levy up to $91 per student. So you would, so just kinda quick figures, if you, if you went from that angle, and you said, we're gonna essentially, we wanna levy so that all the instructional coaching is coming out of QCOM, you'd basically have to levy for about 428,000, which would hover between that 11, on a $300,000 home, you're looking at 1151 to 14, 1439 per household on that top chart. Does that give enough information, or?
Just a question, when you, that number, that's approximately for FTE, right?
Correct.
Is that, I, I thought that in the past, we had supported four coaches out of the general fund, and it's only this one year that we're doing three out of the general fund.
Correct. And general fund and achievement integration. Because achievement integration has one, and then we've been doing, we went to three out of professional development. So four, four out of the district side of the house is probably a better way to put it, which includes achievement integration and professional development. The other FTE out of QCOM.
But the shifting, maybe I'm, I have it wrong, but I thought that we have temporarily shifted one to QCOM.
Correct. So the, the PD, so one's coming out of, of PD there.
Right.
Which leaves two in PD, in professional development.
Yeah, two in PD.
Got it, okay.
And as an FTE, about 100,000?
We use 107 right now, just as a, that's the ceiling. They don't all mix there. And what we've tried to do in the past, and Kathy does a great job helping this, is we try to balance that out. Historically, what we've tried to do is balance it out so that QCOM's not paying an extreme more amount than what the district's paying, and vice versa.
Thanks.
Liz?
So if we did not levy for QCOM, what would the impact to the general fund be?
A year from now, it will be three instructional coaches being paid for out of professional development, one, is, am I that right? And one instructional coach out of achievement integration. So, and...
Four.
So it'd be, out of the, truly out of general fund, would be roughly, I budget three, when we've been doing the past, about 345-ish. And then you've got that achievement integration, but remember, achievement integration is, it's locked into certain things, so you don't get that back to the general fund. It would get back to achievement integration. That's where we go.
So we, we currently have that burden in the, in the general fund. By, by levying for it, it would be a relief to our, our general fund.
If, I would say you'd have to be really clear that that's what you, so that's where, as you negotiate, then, the way that QCOM sets up, the board essentially, through the QCOM board then, would negotiate with the SCEA group that if we're gonna put money in, this is what we're, if we're gonna agree to levy additional dollars, we're gonna do that as long as that additional dollars is spent on XYZ. Does that make, does that make sense? Because the, how it's set up is a negotiate, how QCOM dollars are set up, is a negotiated plan between the teachers' union and the school district.
A couple more things I should clarify. Josiah texted me as a reminder, I don't know if this matters or not, but charter schools cannot levy for QCOM for some of you who are, may have that as an interest. And the two that I mentioned, Hutchinson and Bemidji, are two that are larger than 2,300. There are 14 smaller than 2,000 student districts within the state that do levy, or don't levy. I forgot about the charter school thing also.
Other questions? Comments?
Will this be coming on Thursday? Both of these decisions?
Well, QCOM has, historically for us, QCOM has never made it to that, only because we've never been the, given the direction to explore. The board hasn't wanted to in the past even go down the road of doing QCOM dollars, so that, we need the direction.
I thought we did consider, when we considered OPEB, I think we kinda looked at both.
I think you looked at it, but said, yeah, we're, we're not gonna even entertain that. We would just need the direction, and then we can put it, put it on the agenda.
When you say you need the direction, what do you mean?
Well, it's on the draft agenda that we developed, so if it's something that you're interested in and you want to have it remain on there, it can. If it's not, then it doesn't need to be on there. I don't think it's, to Bob's point, we've never actually placed it on the agenda in the past for the additional OPEB.
Because if we, if we don't wanna approve the additional funds, then we don't need to have a discussion.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
You'd only put it on there if you were entertaining adding.
Okay.
So it would seem like if there are some strong opponents or proponents, this would be a good time to put that out there.
Well, so when we, so when we looked at this last year and voted on this last year, that was the first year that we ever had... that was the first year that we ever had it on the agenda?
You always have the, you always have our Q Comp program, and we do our report, and this is for the additional, asking for the additional local levy to happen if you want it to. So that amount that Bob had indicated, if you want to go above the, when you're part of the Q Comp program, you get funding automatically. So that's when you work back and forth with MD to have your program approved. And so when it's approved, then we get a base funding, everybody gets that. Then if you want to do a local levy on top of that for additional funding, you have the choice to do that. Passports have never asked us to put on the agenda the additional local levy to approve them.
Can I, can I?
Sure.
Oh, yes, just really quick. So the local levy amount is, is that double what we get? So you're essentially doubling this from what we get from the state? Or what's, how do they determine what that maximum is?
It's a formula, so a hundred and sixty-nine dollars, we get an aid, ninety-one dollars would be the levy.
Up to.
Max, up to ninety-one.
Yes, and I would like to point out to Jennifer's question, so this, the Q Comp program began in sixteen seventeen. So it's not like OPEB where this has been a long-running conversation about how to fund it, or what are our opportunities to fund it. And I'm trying to remember back, with sixteen seventeen, we talked about it in calendar year eighteen, because we talked about it last year during the levy cycle. Remember, the levy's a year ahead. And so I'm, I'm not quite sure as far as the timing, but you might have-
I think, I, I was just thinking about this, I think we had learning sessions at that point, and I think we discussed it in a learning session, but it wouldn't have been a time where we would have taken a vote, you know, because that, we never did that. And then I think it was pretty clear at that, after that discussion, that if I'm remembering correctly, that it was like, nah, this isn't going to go anywhere. So then maybe that's why it didn't come forward as an agenda item at a regular business.
Right, and the program isn't that old, so kind of, I mean, it just wasn't, we had, I would say, far more in-depth conversation about the levy this, a year ago.
Yeah.
But it wasn't like this, again, not a longstanding program, where we could have been discussing it for years and years and years, because that isn't the case. It's been a few years.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're determining now, are there strong proponents or advocates of this that wanted to go to the agenda?
So, does somebody else have a, I'm just looking at, I was exploring the website over at C, the Schools for Equity, and they have a lot of really good data, charts, graphs, lot of really good information about school districts, comparing where different school districts are at in terms of their funding, local funding, there's cross subsidy, and a lot of really good information on C, on the website there. And I'm just looking at, they have a chart that is, school districts rely on operating levy revenue from local taxpayers to make up for inadequate state funding. So they're trying to make the point that because the state has not been funding us at the level they have in the past, over the past fifteen years, it's just been dwindling and dwindling, we have had, as districts, we've had to rely more on the local levy. And this chart is really great, because it shows, you know, what the amount across subsidy is as compared to our operating levy, what we're getting from the state. Everybody gets the same from the state, you know, per pupil. So this is a whole list of every district in the state. And I'm wondering, I might try to get, have Barb send this to us, we can look at it. But it says that our local operating levy per pupil is one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, which puts us at a rank with, with number one being the very highest and three hundred and seventy-three being the lowest. Our rank for our operating levy is sixty-five, so we're higher than all the rest of the districts in the state, except for sixty-five. We're higher than Whiteboro Lake, we're higher than Mata Medei, we're higher than, than Forest Lake. So I think there's been a little bit of a, for me, there's been a little bit of a confusion as to where are we at in terms of our operating levy, in terms of compared to other districts and what they're asking for. It's really interesting to me, too, because there is such a huge range. Lancaster, for example, tiny little school district in the southern part of the state has an operating levy per pupil of like four thousand six hundred dollars. It's huge. Okay, I'm not sure what that's all about, or how they did that, but, you know, or even if that's allowed, like how, I thought there was a maximum, you know, so I don't know how that works. And of course, you know, your schools like Orno and Wayzata and Hopkins notoriously are much higher. Minneapolis is really high. Minneapolis's local levy is really, really high, so property, property taxpayers in Minneapolis are paying like, I don't know, something like triple what we pay. But it's just interesting to me. So for me, the question is, when we add these things on, you know, if we levy for OPEB, if we levy for Q Comp, if we levy for everything we can possibly levy, we levy really high for the long-term facilities. You know, this is all, it's going to all add up as a burden on our community, and I just, I want us to be very careful that we're being effective, that we're being efficient and respectful of the taxpayer dollars.
Could you, could you weigh in on that? Because I think there's some-
I can. Again, just, just for clarification's sake, what a school district collects per student or for their debt does not equal necessarily the taxpayer experience. So, and, and I, I completely understand what you were saying, but to say that, you know, we're, we're hitting our taxpayers with three times more, what happens is, is as, you know-
No, I said Minneapolis was higher.
Okay, but that, but I don't know that Minneapolis is, and again, I haven't looked at it, I don't know that Minneapolis taxpayer, if you take a three hundred thousand dollar home in Minneapolis, I don't know how much of the school levy there, like what that looks like based on the-
Right, and this is just comparing per pupil.
Right, but that's-
So this is how much we're getting, you know, in terms of looking at how our budget looks compared to other budgets, not necessarily looking at the total tax base and the market value and all of that, but just looking at how much do we have per pupil to spend?
Yeah. So it, so just, just, again, just for clarification, you're talking the revenue received, not the taxpayer experience?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, because that, they're, they're two very different things, and the taxpayer experience, I would say, shows that we are significantly lower, and that depends on commercial, industrial, and, you know, ag property, and seasonal rec, I mean, all of those come into components with particular cities and the communities that they serve. But as far as our taxpayer experience, we're on the low end. As far as the revenue collection, I, I do not doubt that the, that the numbers you're reading, because they sound familiar to me, as far as an approval of an operating referendum, aren't accurate. It does include the old local optional, the four twenty-four-
Right.
Because our voters approved fifteen thirty-six, whatever, back in thirteen. However, there are other components. How much debt have they taken in? How mu, you know, what are, so absolutely, you're right, it's the entirety of, we have to look at the, the long-range maintenance, we have to look at OPEB, Q Comp, you know, voter-approved debt, but that all comes in together, and so I just caution that in just taking a category for the operating referendum, and maybe that's the conversation we have, because that's pure free money. Free money as far as free how-to-spend, not free money as far as free to our taxpayers. Restrictions.
Yeah.
That comes in with no restrictions, that's a better word-
Yeah.
Than, you know, what you do for debt, but it's all one big piece. It's, and so just careful on how you analyze.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and I, I think, because I appreciate the point, and I would really like if we had both charts. I've heard some people say about this one, like, our community's not supporting our schools, which isn't true. It's just that we have a larger tax base to cover it. But I've, I mean, people said, like, look how bad we are, but that's not actually accurate, and so-
Well, you know, and it depends, again, without breaking out each nuance, I would say, you know, to Sarah's point about, you know, here's our operating, but do others have, do they have a, a technology levy? Because if they do, that's not reflected on the number you looked-
This is just operating levy, total, yeah.
Right, and so we're using our operating money to cover technology, where someone might have a completely different levy to do that, and so-
Yeah, it just says additional operating revenue generated from local property taxes, so it's just not, that's all it says. So it's not clear exactly what all is included in that.
And this also doesn't reflect when operating levies have renewed. A lot of these have renewed theirs sooner than, more recently than we have, and so I, I just want, like, it-
This is recent, this is recent.
Well, no, I mean, a lot of these school, ours is about to expire-
Right.
Very soon, but many of them have renewed-
Yeah.
In the time since we have, so it's, it's just, it's important to include all of that, I think.
Okay, Mark? Yeah, thanks. And, and I want to make sure that when we're talking about operating revenue, and you had a wide range of numbers there, I think the point is that not all those dollars are classroom dollars. They're, they're debt that is being used for, I, I believe-
The, the operating is, I mean, that's what, again, that's the least restrictive, you can use it for salaries, you can use it for classroom, but what isn't, when we look at this slide, that's when the, the restrictions come into place. That's when you have your debt component, that's when you possibly have a technology levy, that's when you have other categories-
Right.
That go to support.
Right, and, and so I think it's important that if we, and I agree that to have, you know, another slide that maybe just compares us in terms of our operating levy per pupil, because I think that there are other districts that are at least as much as we are, if not more, and that, you know, we have, we have not gone to the maximum. In, in, in the past, we're not at the maximum, where, where we could be. So our, our taxpayers were getting a good, a good education without going to the maximum at this point, so we want to make that clear to, to the public.
Also, can I just say, too, when we look at this chart, I, I mean, I would love to have a whole conversation with you about how, what actually goes into the, creating that, those numbers? Because isn't student enrollment part of that? When you, when you have, you know, like, this chart that I'm looking at here is per pupil funding of revenue. So it's looking at comparing kind of how many, you know, how many dollars do you have per every student? So you could, that's a unit that you can kind of define, you know, regardless of the size of your district or the size of your community. But this one is looking at total tax base, and then it's looking at how many students are you actually enrolling, right? Because if you have charter schools competing with you, and they're taking a lot of your kids away, you're, those, those dollars aren't collected like this, right?
True, that's, that's a component of the levy. So back when I mentioned, there's essentially a thirty-four-page formula document that I look at. Not all of the, the formulas are based on student count. And so, like, our debt is not based on student count, we just owe what we owe every year.
Right.
And so I would say, true for fourteen million of it, for sure-
Okay.
Of our, you know, thirty million-plus-dollar levy, because that's our operating, that's based on student count, that's true. But I wouldn't say, that's not the holistic reflection is just student count.
And I know it's super, super complicated, but if that one hundred, one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollar amount, at the enrollment rate that we're at, at what, seventy-one percent or something like that, if our enrollment rate was at, say, eighty percent or a hundred percent, that number would go up as part of the formula somewhere. It's not as part of the whole formula, but it would go up to some extent, right?
Assuming everything else was held constant, yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's do this, two things. One is, I still am waiting, do we want to bring this up?
Yeah.
But let's do this, Peter's back here, Leatherman, why don't we have him come up, if that's appropriate, at this point? And then that'll give other people, if you want to be a proponent, if we want to bring this forward as an item on the agenda, we can do this, but I think what we need is some advocates from this group saying-
For Q Comp? He's discussing Q Comp?
No, he's more or less the whole topic of levies and elections. And is Peter's expertise and Bill's expertise is community.
So, but before we do that, can we, do you need to have direction for June thirteenth? Do we want to have-
We'll come back to that one.
Are you going to come back to it? Okay.
I just don't, he's been waiting patiently for the time, so we'll come back. Remind him, please.
Okay.
I'm glad I could be here today. Two days ago, I would have called and canceled, so if I have a cough, I apologize, I'm still getting over a cold from this fall, but actually, it was helpful to listen, Mike, and, and kind of hear the discussion and read the materials and everything, so. Where do you want me to start?
Do you think for, we have some new board members-
Yeah, we have some new board members.
Give a little background for them? Thank you.
Absolutely. My name is Peter Leatherman, I'm one of the owners of the Morris Leatherman Company. We're formerly Decision Resources, switched over in two thousand thirteen, but my business partner is Bill Morris, for those of you that have known him through the years, oh, bless you, I left mine in the car. I've been doing public opinion research, Bill's been doing it since nineteen eighty-two, I've been doing it since nineteen ninety-four. And we primarily work with cities and school districts across the state. With cities, we do residential quality of life, park bond referendum planning. With school districts, it's a whole broad type of surveys, whether it's policy, quality of education, communications, primarily the bond referendum and operating levy, facility planning, even, you know, somebody was talking about students leaving, a lot of districts do what we call outbound surveys, to talk to parents who are making decisions to send their children to a different option, and to understand those reasons. Because a lot of people, when you have outflow, outmigration, shall we say, people are reacting to what they're hearing, and sometimes that doesn't match up with what the actual overarching reasons are. And a perfect example is Edina, what's gone on over the last couple of years. You know, that one issue that came up was not the catalyst, what it was, was the straw that broke the camel's back. There were other issues there. And so that's important to understand. So that's kind of the background. And, you know, over the course of twenty-five years, we've done hundreds and hundreds of referendum, you know, and it goes in ebbs and flows and phases. Over, you know, during the recession, it was primarily operating levy, that's where school districts were looking at the funding. And you really could see over the last five years, the bond referendum needs, facility needs in the district were backburnered in place of operating levy needs. And so now, it's bond referendum after bond referendum, and you see them all around you. You had your successful one in two thousand fifteen, no? My gosh, time flies. And so, you know, now, this year, it's about equal, the number of districts going out between bond and operating levy, where I would say two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, it was primarily bond referendum. They have their challenges, they, they both have their challenges, and a lot of it are, you know, there are macro issues in play. You know, the first, with an election, and we saw it happen a couple of weeks ago, with the cycle of referendum that happened in, in May, on May fourteenth, those bond referendums in the rural areas, they were challenges to start with. And then what happened at a national level, with tariffs and trade, and farmers, and rural, and everything, a few of those should have passed. You know, Owatonna lost by a hundred and twenty votes. If that would have gone two weeks before, it probably would have passed. I mean, it's just outside of the hands, the, at the macro level, those things impact. There is a growing concern we're seeing in our data right now, and we've seen it since last, over the holidays, where the market started to yo-yo. There's a question, we, we used to ask income back in the day, how much money do you, you know, what's your annual household income? And then we'd look at support and opposition, but long ago, my business partner and I realized that income does not necessarily mean that you are, have, you're financially comfortable. You know, it just, you know, it dawned on us, we were driving through Eden Prairie and seeing these nice houses with no decks on it, and it's like, okay, there's a disconnect here. And so we asked a four-part scale on financially stressed versus financially comfortable, and put people in categories. And since the holidays, where it used to be two to one, say thirty to thirty-five percent saying they're financially stressed, to sixty to sixty-five percent saying they're financially comfortable, it's now closing. It's about forty to sixty, and we've had two school districts in the last two weeks that have come out fifty-fifty. There is a growing financially stressed situation out there, and it really, you know, that's at the macro level of what's happening with the economy, what's happening with the markets, what's going to happen in August, or November, or next year, going to someone knows. Then, as you come down to the macro level, you know, we'll, we'll come down from thirty thousand feet to, say, twenty thousand feet, you have the impact of the state legislature decisions last week. And how that plays, we're not sure yet. We have multiple districts now that were waiting to do a survey on, for a potential operating levy this fall, because they wanted to see the impact of what the messaging was going to be. You know, the two and two, cutting the special, you know, helping fill the gap on special ed, how that plays into people, okay, hey, they just got a whole bunch of money, they don't need it. So it will be interesting to see how that- So it will be interesting to see how that plays out. We should have data by the middle of June to have a feeling on that. In the past, what we found with the biennial budgets that come out of the legislature, they caused more confusion than answer questions for people. You have more people saying, I don't know, because one side says they gave them a lot of money. One side said they didn't give them enough money. It is interesting because we are seeing in survey after survey, one of the most effective arguments for an operating levy is the unfunded mandate of special education. If you lay out the dollars that the gap between state and federal government providing for mandated special ed and the deficit and the operating budget in district after district, that is the most compelling argument for people to say, you know what, I support that. It's kind of out of the district's hands. It's interesting how it's been messaged so far from the state level because they have made a big deal of giving $90 million for special ed. And I can tell my clients already, it's going to be important to put that in context of what this means in the district. Because just like, you know, if your neighbor goes for a $300 million bond referendum to the east, what, to the west, what matters is how much it costs the person. Similarly, they hear $90 million coming for special ed, you have to relate that. And the two and two, what does that mean to the budget? You know, one district, regardless of what the state did, they have to go for an operating levy this fall. There's no, there's no choice because they have basically a $10 million gap. They have been educating their public since January that for every 1% you hear from the state, it generates $900,000. That's what it equates to. So if we get 2%, it's less than $2 million and we still have a $10 million gap. You have to relate the number to the district itself. And the same thing with that special education. $90 million sounds like a lot of money. But I could tell you in the surveys we've written over the past six months, there's $90 million in 20 districts of gap between that. I mean, that's not closing any gap. And so it's important to really let it down. So, you know, you have, say, the national, the state, then you come to the district. The district level, it's important now, I mean, that will have the most impact on a referendum. You know, these are, they are important factors that tap on top and they're the ones that are out of your control technically. But that's why we do, you know, the surveys and look at atmospherics in the district. Because on election day, you want folks to walk into the voting booth as a blank slate. That they're not bringing baggage from the past in and they're simply doing a cost benefit. This is what's being asked for. This is how much it costs and here's the calculation. Districts that have that ability, that there are no red flag or outlying issues, have the best chance of success. It's also important to understand that as you go through an operating levy or bond referendum campaign, you burn political capital. You have to have political capital to burn. And there are sometimes I walk into a district when I look at the results and say, you don't have capital. And so, I mean, if you, you have to go out and tell people, okay, you're financially credible. You do a good job listening. You do a good job involving. You have to change the dynamics in the district. You know, we don't know what those dynamics are here because we haven't done one of the atmospheric surveys, I believe, since 2015. So, you know, I can't speak to that. I can speak to, you know, there are overarching, you know, themes with the operating levy and every district's unique. You know, in looking at, you know, it's always confusing listening to funding. Like I said, 25 years and I still don't understand your job. Too many acronyms, too many formulas. It's too hard. To fully comprehend, it's not so much important in how you compare to the neighbors. There are three school districts on the west side of the metro area, and if you think hard, you can name them, that it matters what the neighbors are doing. All the other school districts look, for the most part, residents think and say, okay, this is our school district. What are core values and what's important to us? And they have to understand, especially with an operating levy. And this is, I mean, this goes back to Jesse Ventura. When in the 90, 20 years ago? Oh, wow. 99, the perfect storm election. Where he went around and talked about accountability. The districts have the money, but they're not making the cuts. They ask and ask and ask. He really changed the dynamic and people have to understand that there's consequences. If an operating levy doesn't pass, what are the logical consequences? Because if there are none and a person goes in for a cost benefit analysis and says, well, nothing's going to happen. If this doesn't pass, they're going to vote no. Why? I mean, it's just a rational behavior to have. And a lot of boards, I've had lots of friendly conversations with boards as they say, we don't make threats. It's not a threat. You have to sit and say, this is, if we don't have this money, this is the result. You don't commit yourself to the level. One district, well, it was Ossio probably 20 years ago on a bond referendum. Said that if the bond didn't pass, they were going to close the school in Brooklyn Park. Well, Maple Grove resident said, great, we don't care. You're closing the one on that side of the school district and voted no. So you don't be specific, but you have to say, this could, we could cut teachers, we could lose programming, we could increase class sizes. There's an impact. There has to be a logical consequence to voting yes or voting no for people to understand. The second thing that's most important though is there has to be follow-through. There have been districts that have had logical consequences put out there, not done them. And then they burn all credibility. And so you have to be willing. And that's why it's so important to be specific enough that people understand that it's consequential. Okay. Boy, what else? Go ahead, Mike. Fire someone.
Possibilities that we're looking at is we're looking at how soon we need to do this to renew. Also, we established a long-range planning committee. And so they'll be looking at facilities as well. You mentioned that now it's about 50/50. How many are operating levies and how many are bond issues? Is there any particular order? Do you do them both at the same time? Do you do them at different times?
In, in a, the perfect scenario, well, I guess perfect in quotes, because it depends on the cost impact. The most cogent argument to make for an operating levy, if you're building new, is you obviously need more funds to operate the new building. That makes sense to people. There have been districts that have made the mistake. Eastern Carver did it years ago. Delano, I think, El Gribber did too, where they did the bond referendum, then through the operating levy. Came back two years when they're ready to open the school and the public said no. And so I know the Chesapeake, the Chesapeake Middle School sat empty for a year. So to tie it that way. If it's hard to do a spring/fall, no matter which, because, you know, your limited operating levies have to be November. And you have the February, April, May, August and November for bond. It's hard to do, to make a cogent argument on doing a, especially an operating levy in November and coming back for a bond referendum in February or April or May. If you do make that decision, and some have done it and some have been successful. You have to tell the whole story from the start. And basically, you know, that would be the order that we typically see would be the operating levy first. But because of all the planning required for the bond referendum and adding it to the mix, the review and comment necessary from the Minnesota Department of Education, it elongates the process enough that we, we have the ability and we want to get this right. We're not going to rush it. To come in May for a bond, and there was a district that, well, Owatonna was going to try to do this. To build, get the high school in May and come back for an operating levy in November. And they were telling the story that it was going to be both. But because they, you have to make an argument that you're worried about basically instant, interest rates, construction costs and everything like that. It is a harder sell in that sense. A lot of people just said, just wait and do it all at once. Especially because when you separate it, and the most important part of the decision is you need, and in this district is absolutely a case in the past, you need an extraordinarily get out the vote effort. You need a strong grassroots yes group. And if you have a bond and an operating levy separated by six months, you are exhausting volunteers. You're exhausting resources and you're, I mean, it is a hard, hard work. It's much easier to have all the volunteers come around because, you know, you have certain groups of volunteers that rally around certain issues. You know, some academics in the classroom, some technology, some are bond, you know, building facilities, some are athletic that'll be in the bond. And you can put this coalition together. When you split it, it does make it more difficult.
So talk about, because we're kind of a one-question district or have been in the past. Do people see bond and levy as two separate questions then?
No, the, yeah. Multiple questions that are legally necessary are fine to have the operating and bond. What, what we really don't like, and there are a few instances where we've had to recommend to clients is when you separate, okay, here's the bond referendum and we're going to separate out the academics and the athletics for two question on a bond. Or God help me, years ago, Nokahenipin did a five-question operating levy.
It's crazy.
Here's $100 per pupil unit increase for this and 100 for this and 100. It was like ordering off of a menu and they passed three out of five. But that's, but if you have, you know, legally, you can't mix operating and bond, that makes sense. I mean, one of the, one of the things and the point of the discussion is when you have them together is do you make them contingent? And I would say most districts for the case for the, you know, with having empty schools, if you're building new, you make them contingent. Because you don't want to have a building that you can't open.
And then what about, I think you've talked about it, presidential election is not a good time. Is that?
It's, well. That's, yeah, it's not a good time, period. No. There are, and, and, I mean, I go back to, we don't know what the dynamics are here. I would be surprised if it was a good time, but I have to say, I mean, I go back in 2016, the Orono School District wanted to go for a referendum. And my business partner and I, like, you know, dear friends with the superintendent, you can't go. And she said, do a survey. So we did the survey and they could win. And I kept, I argued with my business, we can't go. It's Trump versus Hillary. You're going to lose the best everything. And they ended up winning. I mean, the data showed that, you know, it was potentially, there were numerous other districts we had to go and say, no. I mean, some districts are helped by large turnout. Others are hurt by large turnout. You know, you just don't know until you get into the data. The one thing, whether it is a presidential or a gubernatorial election, and regardless of who the candidates are. The most, the most difficult part is not the turnout. It's getting your message through and making people understand. Because there's a lot of noise and communication out there. And, you know, the mantra that we've used for all the years is, is a surprise voter on election day when they look at the ballot and see it as a no voter. And so it's important to understand. The other thing is, you need a very strong vote yes to get the communications out. They're not actually doing the vote yes, get out the vote effort because that is, that basis there in an off, in an even year. But your pool of volunteers willing to do it tends to dry up because they're wanting to do other political aspects. So there are all sorts of those calculations.
Shelley asked my question about the pros and cons of the presidential election, but I had a question too. Well, two actually. What's the story with, I mean, we have, operating levy has to be done in a November election. Or we do a mail ballot. Is that, I mean, I know nobody does that, but like, why, why would anybody choose to do it? Or what's the story on that? What, I mean, what are your thoughts?
I think North Branch tried a mail ballot, basically because they couldn't pass anything for numerous, for numerous years. I think a lot, I don't know, honestly. It's just, I don't know of one that's been successful in that regard. You know, I think the underlying hope was because, I mean, what we know, getting down to a micro level in who a likely voter is in an off-year election, take it out of the general, say 19 or 21. Your most supportive voters are the least likely to show up. Okay? And what I mean by that is the profile, the younger the parent, the more supportive they are. So as we go through and look at, you know, support levels, for successful referendums, it tends to be, you need 80% of parents supporting and you need 80 to 85% of households with preschoolers supporting. Now, when you go back and look at voting patterns, those two groups underrepresent in special elections, typically by up to 50%. And so that's why there is a concerted effort over the past three to four election cycles on early voting. Because years ago, we did surveys on asking parents who didn't vote, why they didn't vote. And we separated it out between elementary and secondary parents. Secondary parents were twice as likely to vote as elementary school parents. And you ask elementary school parents why they didn't vote and households with preschoolers why they didn't vote. They were too busy or they forgot. Which is, is mind-boggling in a sense because you're the key constituency. You're going to be the stakeholder for the longest amount of time. And basically, in essence, it's then not a priority. And when I say this, a lot of millennials have thrown eggs at me. But in a sense, I mean, if you can't make the time, and so the early voting effort with districts has been concerted with that group because we know that if an excuse is there, they're going to go elsewhere. I mean, I know districts that on a, in a, on a November or a May election, the high school coaches go to the athletic association coaches and say, for one night, it's not going to kill the kids if they don't have hockey. Take a night off. And, and don't give the parents an excuse. I mean, this is at that level. So that's the difficulty in the special election. And that's why the grassroots vote yes is so important. Because it is a get out the vote effort and reminding those folks. It's not that they don't support, it's that they don't vote.
Yeah. So my second question was, so you said doing like a bond in May and following up with an operating levy and that directly six months later in that November is not really challenging for the things you already shared.
It's challenging.
What about a year and a half?
A year and a half. If you have a year gap, yeah.
At least a year.
A year gap. I would though, if you're going to sequence it, because it sounds like, like if you mentioned, you've started a facilities planning process and I'm assuming that.
Early.
Early. Yeah, that's going to take, because I'm already working with a few districts that are starting a facilities process, looking at 2021. You know, that process tends to take a while. So if the sequence is operating levy and then a bond in the future, whether you be specific or not, you still, it's important to have people, they're not going to pay, I mean, you know, you could tell somebody something and they forget the next day. But to have that narrative out there that, okay, we're going to, looking at an operating levy, this is what we're asking for. But we started a facilities planning committee and we may be looking at a bond in the future. And start the narrative in the community. I mean, you want to be transparent. It's important.
So then, in your opinion, what would be the, a good times to do surveys? I mean, I know we probably want to have. I mean, I know we, we probably want to have a survey of some kind relating specifically to facility options and questions, you know, and we've talked about that. But, but in terms of passing the bond, passing a levy, you know, what kind of timeline are we looking at for how useful a survey can be?
We found that what's, what's worked best over the last five years in planning. And really, the, this has been borne out. There was a district that will go unnamed about seven years ago. That they started the facilities planning process, brought a whole bunch of people in, came up with a plan they thought was magnificent, brought us in to test it, and it had a snowball's chance. It was not, um, a- and then to go and have to tell the school board the information and then to have to go tell the facilities planning committee that spent six to nine months. I mean, they, they created animosity in the sense, well, then the, the facilities committee say, well, we know best. Yes, you've examined the issue, but at the end of the day, it's not going to pass. I, I mean, you have to work. And so, uh, most, uh, most districts now, when they're going through, and there have been a lot of big ones, obviously, with Anoka Hennepin, Roseville, working with White Bear Lake now, go around the horn with a hundred million, two hundred million dollar referendums, is as you set up the facilities planning, um, group, at some point early in the discussion, you do what we call a guardrail survey. Set the guardrails for the group. You know, so, you know, how do you, what do they need to color within the lines? And it's not so much, you know, would you support, you know, a hundred million dollars? You, you'd never ask that. You're asking in broad concept, support property tax increase for XXXXX. Tax tolerance, what's important? What's your perceptions on class sizes, on deferred maintenance, all those things? So you understand where the community's coming from. Because then if there is that disconnect, like that district had, there's still time to communicate with the public on, we need to change your perception. Okay? And that's what, and actually what happened with that district I was giving the example, they basically took six months off and communicated to the community the need and came back in the spring and it passed, okay? But they needed, they could not have gone in November, um, at, at that time. So in, in setting up that guardrail survey, and so, you know, White Bear Lake did bears. I was out there last fall. And then I just presented a few weeks ago where we actually tested the plan. Okay, they, they had the guardrail set, six, seven months later, come back in, here's the plan, test it. Now they can make a decision on what to do. So that's really the process that folks are following right now as they look at the facilities planning portion of it.
Oh, thanks. Peter, what would you suggest in terms of timing from when the question has been formed for a bond referendum or maybe differently in, in operating referendum? The time that you need to get that message out? How, how long from the time that you have to find what your question is going to be before you, before election day? Do you need typically?
Well, I mean, obviously, the legal requirements, you know, the communication portion, it's not so much, you know, we typically, you don't campaign over the summer. Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's pointless. I mean, the campaign really starts the second week of September, you basically run an eight to ten week campaign, but it's most intense for the last six weeks roughly, five, four to six weeks for communication because people are tuned out. It is, you know, there, there are numerous districts with an operating levy that it's not going to be possible because they had to wait for the legislature. So there, there, a lot of districts is going to be making a decision in August on whether to go or not. But they've already started to lay the groundwork on the vote yes. Identifying the leaders having the infrastructure. Because it's, it's darn near impossible to put together a, a, a vote yes in August in Minnesota. You kind of have, so there, you have to do the preliminary portion of the communication. The bond referendum, but building, that has more, that means, needs more time to marinate in the community, shall we say. It's a bigger, um, decision, it's more explanation. Because a lot of people, especially in Bill, I mean, they'll want detail in an operating levy, but they don't want detail like they want in a bond referendum where you have to go and say, this is what's happening at your school, um, at that level. Yeah, with pictures, yeah. I mean, Anoka Hennepin, you have to be walking to every single school at a huge display on what's happening to this school because you want to personalize it. So it's not so much the communication that, to the outreach to the community, uh, really doesn't change. You know, it's still that six to eight week. It's always helpful though to ha- if, if, if you're looking at November, it's always helpful to have at least the groundwork laid, even if the decision isn't made till the summer, the ground like work laid before school's out. Does that help?
Yeah, and if, if I, if, I know there's been some talk about, um, taking the results from our, uh, long-range, uh, facility task force and depending on what the recommendations are, moving toward, uh, a, a bond referendum. That could potentially be then in, in May, for example. We could be in April, it could be a different time, but May is a time that you can do it.
Yeah, not April.
Okay.
April fifteenth is too close, yeah, you don't. That's, that's, I think, districts forget about that, yeah.
Texting. But i- in, in your experience, when would you, um, recommend that the, the school district have it, it defined what we're going to be talking about to the public? What, what, what is the plan going to be when you come to the polls in, in May?
To tie a timeline it back to May, you would, you know, the, the legal requirements set, set out of sight, the communication portion and all that groundwork. You would want to have the basis of the decision, e- everything ready before Thanksgiving. Because basically from the middle of November till January second, nobody's going to pay attention. I- in that sense, you know, once the election happens in November, everybody tunes out. And so they're not, there, there's no point in doing a big communication push or anything like that. But it's an opportunity to lay that groundwork so you hit the, you're running. And you don't have to call the question until probably roughly first part of February, seventy-five, something like that. But to start laying that groundwork. You always want to get the foundation built. So you have something to build on once the decision's made. It's really hard to make the decision and then build the foundation.
Thank you, thank you very much, first of all. Can I, I'm processing the conversation and could you just say a little bit more? I want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So are you suggesting that it's better for a district to do one of two things, one, go for levy first, then the bond? As opposed to bond first, then the levy based on what you commented about in the other districts? Or go for both of them at the same time? And, and include, um, consequences or contingency in it? If, you know, we need this for this, is, is, did I get that accurately?
Option recommended, without data, I'll, I'll just say, say best practices would be do them together. Depending on tax impact, I mean, that's how it is going to. The second best option would be operating levy, then a bond. The more difficult story in the past with history is bond, then levy. But regardless, in all three of those scenarios, you, the logical consequences apply. You know, and with a bond referendum, it, it's hard to have logical consequences. Um, I mean, there's, you know, you're still going to have buildings after the election. You know, like Anoka Hennepin talks, you know, that it was attendance boundaries that were going to have to shift. I mean, and that was, uh, that, that was part of the logical consequences. But a lot of a bond referendum is about, um, improving and, you know, how do you, for those of you that haven't heard, you know, in our data, what we find in survey after survey, Minnesotans are difficult graders. Nothing's excellent, everything's good. You can't, it's hard to make things excellent. And good is oftentimes good enough. And so the vision on bond referendums is, is often, how do you transition people from good to excellent? And it's not just enough to have the bright shiny building. Unless you're, those three districts on the western side of Hennepin County. It is important to tie bond referendum needs to the academic quality in the classroom. And after, you know, survey after survey now, it's curriculum and programming. Bond referendum for career tech space is extraordinarily supportive right now across the state of Minnesota. So, yes.
Peter, last time you were here and you worked professionally with an issue was when we went through the school closings. How relevant is that? How do we find out how relevant that is today?
Ask.
So that's part of my question. You talked about the guardrail survey and you talked about atmospheric survey. Can you get atmospheric information out of a guardrail?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it would be an important part here is, is to separate it out and, and test those atmospherics. Because, you know, w- we know the, the, the good thing is we have a rich history of data with the district. So we know what things were in the past on ratings of trust and accountability and financial. I mean, all of those things. So we have those for comparisons. And that's the most important, um, aspect to go. I mean, I wouldn't sit and ask, do you think bold was a good idea? In that sense, you'll know from where people feel at, at, and the general atmospherics on trust. You know, I, I think it would be important to follow up with some, you know, if you disapprove on some of these things, why? An open-ended where they can tell us. But that, the general atmospherics and then the guardrail, that typically is one, uh, uh, early on. And then when you come back and, you know, like White Bear Lake, it was, it was a shorter survey because we did the atmospherics guardrails last fall because you have opportunity to change any perceptions, um, with atmospherics at that point in time. And then you're just testing package and looking at what's being discussed.
Shifting over to operating levy, you talked about the, the stick approach, saying this is what could happen if you don't pass. How effective is a carrot approach? Do you do both? Do you, in terms of, this is what, very specifically, what you could, what, what we would propose to implement in the schools if you say yes? How, how does the, kind of the carrot approach work?
I call it value add. I, I mean, if, if there are, it, well, you have to understand if it's important to the community to have it as a value add. And so districts on operating levy, i- if you are doing those value add items, if you're not in a position, it's, i- it, it's tough when we're doing, working on an operating levy where the question is, you know, vote for a property tax increase to maintain what you have. Or God help me, there's one out there now we're doing, you know, vote for a property tax increase to go to the cap and we still have to make cuts. That's a difficult message to have. The, um, i- it's important though that it line up and you, you have data because commu- every district's idiosyncratic on what's important to them. And so, you know, if, if there are potential, um, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan had probably eight different items on the list when we did their survey in the operating levy for this fall about would they support a property tax increase for this, 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 this? Now, off the top of my head, I think all of them were supported, but there were two or three that, you know, at seventy-five, eighty percent. That then can help with, you know, i- if you have the carrot, the carrot's better.
Okay, okay.
But most districts don't have the carrot.
Is there anything we should have asked you that we didn't?
It's been wide-ranging. I'm still on some cold medication, so I, the brain's not working all that well.
Peter, what about, um, you know, you talked about the having bond and operating together and the challenges of a presidential election even year. How do you weigh that with waiting for a off-year and a 2021 and then that being your, you know, we shared earlier, that's our fall off the cliff date as far as our operating, uh, levy?
Right.
You know, is there?
So 2021 is, yeah, and looking at, well, is, is Kristen? Twenty twenty-one is what expires or twenty, you get the funding through, can you go in November of 2022?
No.
Okay, 2021, so it's.
The funding goes through, but it's, um, let's go this way. Renewal could happen in November of 2020. Or it could also, um, happen in, uh, 2020, I'm, I'm reading.
Yeah.
A renewal question could happen in November 2020 and commence immediately for taxes payable '21 for fiscal year '22 or delay the year. Or a revoke and replace could happen this November. So, um, that would be, the last shot would be November of 2021.
If, i- I mean, if you went, if you waited till 2021, you wouldn't do, you wouldn't put all your eggs in the basket. Regardless of what a survey says, you know, we would tell a client, you don't do, um, and a, a, a replacement with addition. You renew and then ask for additional. There have been two districts that have failed a flat renewal over the last decade in, in that sense. So I, the fact that it expires in '21 as a flat rea- because you have, is it, does it have inflation on there?
It does.
It does, so you would still have the language, it wouldn't say this doesn't. It still would be surprising, shocking to lose a renewal. But then you would have to have two questions.
Can you say more? So now I'm, did you say in 2021 at the dra- at the, if that's our drop dead, you're saying don't go for an add-on, just go for a straight renewal?
You, you would have to, you'd, you'd have to, we would ra- I mean, the history would say we, you, you go for the revoke and replace when you still have the ability, chances to renew. Okay, but if 2021 is it? I can't think of a district that pushed all the chips in, uh, asking for basically a revoke and replace.
All right. Thank you.
So weigh that with presidential election and with that we tend to be a fail-pass. We often fail the first one and then pass the second one. So does that trump not doing it on a presidential election year?
No pun, good pun.
Sorry.
Would have reacted quicker, but the cold, the clout.
Peter, one of the things you're in the position to do that because Morris and yourself have worked so closely with this district over the years, is one, is that the trend in District 834? Fail, win, fail, win. And I'm not sure of the answer, even though I've been on this board ten years. And then secondly, uh, what is there to answer Shelley's question? Do you still hold it in presidential?
I mean, every, I wouldn't, th- that might be the trend as I think back over history per se. But I would say that there are idiosyncratic reasons within that fail, pass, fail, pass that doesn't necessarily have to, um, be, it doesn't make it etched in stone. I mean, I mean, good, I mean, you had one fail going back, how long ago was the laptop? That was fifteen, twenty. So, yeah, I, I mean. Yeah, I mean, hi- history, history plays long. Where, you know, if you didn't have that issue, you wouldn't have failed that one. I- in, in that sense. So, um, i- i- in thinking, you know, making assumptions not having. So, in thinking, you know, making assumptions not having any data, but with, if you, if you wanted to go in 2020, the rationale would be to go for additional funding. Correct. I mean, you wouldn't just do a renewal, it would be a revoke and replace. You know, it depends on how much, it depends on carrot or the stick, what sort of aspects you're looking at. And then it depends, you know, we would have to look at the survey and look at data.
So that would come out of your survey? You could?
Yeah, we, yeah, we could tell on a survey whether you're hurt or helped by turnout.
Okay.
Is there statewide, and again, understanding it's not Stillwater specific, any sort of approach when we look at, and I'm just assuming 2019 is op, so we're looking at two election cycles for our op, and I agree with you that you at least guarantee what you have as a renewal if you're in that last year. Is there any history or trend that would indicate how quickly you can apply for additional? Like, I'm thinking, what if, what if we were in that last year and second question got voted down, but you can support it with a building bond for the operation? Or do you, do you guarantee, does it hurt you to guarantee just the renewal come '20 and then ask for additional come '21? And is there a strategy that makes more sense as far as that extra money goes?
Hmm.
Do you know what, do you guarantee funding regardless of the, I agree with you absolutely have to do it in the last year because that's your only choice, but is there a reason why you package it as one question if we were to go in '20 even though it's a general election? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Seeing it's a general election and seeing renewals are almost automatic, do you, do you go with, okay, we're just going to renew, but by the way, we're going to be coming for more? Is that far too confusing for the taxpayer?
Or creates voter fatigue.
It create, yeah, they're one of the polls anyways, in that sense. Does it benefit you because you would still need to do some communication? You would need to tell the story of, okay, this is this now and we're coming next year and this is why. I don't know how, how easy it would be to get that message across and it might actually create more confusion because remember, you know, if you go, you know, the last time we asked this was probably five years ago because we just gave up asking, you know, do you understand the difference between a bond referendum and operating levy? It's 17% of Minnesotans. And so in, in 2020, if you have on just a renewal, you will have a certain amount of people scratching their heads in 2021 saying, I just voted yes. And you will have the language on there because of the inflation factor of this includes a property tax, yeah, no, yeah, I wouldn't do that.
So if we're going to go for an add, '20 is the time to make it one question, '21 is the time to make it two?
For an operating, yes.
And then would it be 2020 is the time to make it one question plus the bond?
If we're going to do them together, I mean, if that's the recommendation that's best to do them together, I think that's.
Right.
That would be the question. And that would come out of your survey.
Yeah.
Is our community ready for that?
Yeah. The guardrail and atmospheric portion will be helpful to answer a lot of the underlying question. The one, the one caveat we wouldn't know until we get into 2020 is what the political dynamic is in the metro area. I will say in 2000, in early 2017, so right after the president was elected, in survey after surveys, we were helping plan for districts in 2017, early in 2017 for November, the likely voter profile in January through May, Democrats and liberals were depressed, conservatives and Republicans were motivated. And so in district after district, you had the overall community supporting at, say, I'll throw in a number, 60%. You look at likely voters, it was 55% because of the profile of the likely voter. By August and September, you had, this is not a political statement, you had fatigue and conservatives all of a sudden became disillusioned, Democrats became motivated, and you had 2017, I, I mean, that's year we helped pass $986 million of bond referendums. And some of them, I mean, Roseville wasn't even close, it was 70, 30, it was $47 a month. That survey in January, it was tight because of the profile. And it will be a fluid dynamic in 2020, especially until you know who the Democratic candidate is and everything. That's what's completely out of your control as you plan it. You don't know what the electorate will look like. Because one, a Democrat here plays different, one, the same Democrat plays differently between here and St. Louis Park.
Yeah, so I was just thinking logistically, so if we had two questions on the ballot in November, a year from now, 2020, we're talking about the presidential election being the issue, but if we had a bond question and a levy question at that time, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a revoke and replace at that point. It could be an increase at that point, right? It would, could be a one-question levy question, but it could be an increase.
That's what I was wondering, is that what we take away?
And then, and then, but the question, I guess, is the bond, if they both pass at that point, the bond starts activating immediately so that you can do construction, right? Or as soon as the bond is created, sold, and those funds are gathered, then, so, let's just say a bond passes so we could build another elementary school. Let's just say that's what happens. How long before the elementary school can be open? Is that enough time to get it open?
By fall of 21.
By fall of 21?
No.
But if, if we did a bond in May of next year, which is super tight, but if we did, would that be enough time to get the school open by 2021?
It gives you seven more months.
Yeah. So that's one thought. And then, how, so, but then the levy part of that question, if they're both in November of 2020, the operating levy at that point actually doesn't take place until a year later when you're doing the, it's for the following year, right?
You have a choice. You can either have it come into play immediately, because people pass November bonds and they cut, and it's reflective in your truth in taxation in December, or you can delay a year if that happened in 20.
I'm so glad I asked that question because I thought I hadn't heard something like that, but I didn't know.
You would have the option of when that meter starts ticking.
Okay.
For that. And back to the construction, actually, it's more than seven months now that I think about it because we live in Minnesota and ground is frozen. I mean, granted, you'd go through the schematic planning process and all of that for maybe a breaking ground in the spring. If that were to pass in May, it depends on how far along we are in the process because then you have, can you break ground and get struck, infrastructure up before the winter hits? So.
And that's contrary to what he's suggesting.
Right.
What?
As far as doing together, that's the first.
Right. Doing a bond first is not the recommendation.
Right, right. I understand that. I mean, there's obviously pros and cons for all of it, but I'm just, just thinking about timing, you know, in terms of all of it.
Just a couple, so, one on your question, Sarah, if we're talking about timing bond prior to operating levy, is a year and a half enough of a space to avoid the voter fatigue? That's, that would be question number one. You believe that there might be?
No, a year and a half is likely to tell a narrative, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then the second question that I had is, if you have, what do you see as a trend when you have the two question? So you have the revoke and replace and the renewal on the same ballot. What, does it, do you find a trend that typically the voters are just going to go for a renewal?
You wouldn't have, so that's not what you have, right? You'd have a renewal and then an add.
So revoke and, revoke and replace, you're revoking the authority for the existing
and replace, so.
Just one question.
It's one.
It's one question.
But I think before you had said if we did '21, we would do a renew and then an add.
And then an add.
Two question in 2021, one question in 2020.
Okay, what's the difference?
Okay, so here is, here is how it would look. So let's just say right now we have $1,500 approved, but we want to go up to $2,000. A revoke and replace would say, we're wiping out the 1,500, we're starting at 2,000, that's one question.
Yes, sir.
Yes or no? What would happen then is if we kind of get to the end game and we don't want to risk voter impact, we would renew as one question for the 1,500 and then we'd have an additional question for the add of five.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay.
Okay.
So then my question is if, when you have an add as a separate question, what are its chances of success when you have the renewal as one question? And then you have another question on the same ballot for add?
It honestly will depend on the tax impact. You know, not, you know, and the tax tolerance in the community. You know, like, you know, Noka Henepin with their $247 million bond passed the operating levy with it and they both went through about 65, 35. But that was about, that was less than 20 bucks a month on the average house for both of them. So, I mean, that's the one factor, you know, it depends on what the tax tolerance is and the chance of success. I mean, right now, it is, it has been a favorable climate in the metro area for school districts with operating levies and bond referendums for the last four years.
How much consideration is given to what your government entities are doing? Meaning if you have the city of Stillwater or someone going out and doing a major project where there's going to be, back to the tax impact at all, how do you factor that in, if at all, into your questions?
Well, we separate out. We will ask, what's your perception of total taxes? And then what is your perception of school taxes? And typically, I mean, we used to in the good old days, you know, you think your taxes are high, average, or low, and then if you think they're high, who do you blame? And cities and counties got really mad at us when we'd have to report that. So what we do is we separate out and just ask high, average, low for total for school. And so if the total comes in higher than the perception on school, we know that the animus for property taxes is focused elsewhere. That's helpful to know, but unless they're asking for a park bond referendum that they can vote yes or no, they don't have the ability to vote no for anything the county or the city or the township is doing. So the school district and their focus on taxes is there. So there's a way to flesh that out.
Are we exhausted?
He's slowly down in his chair.
I know. I just have a question for us, the next steps and what we need to, we need to do, but appreciate all of your answers.
Peter, thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's always a pleasure. Nice to meet some of you for the first time.
Say hello to Bill for us.
Get some more rest.
Right to bed. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to a new topic, let's finish up the QCOM and what I asked you to consider a little bit. Does anybody want to advocate, or it could be more, it could be six or seven out of seven, for putting QCOM on the next agenda?
Can I just, so, just a question, Mike? If it's not added to the next agenda, what is, what is the then what to that? It, that's it. This is our one shot and it would be an action item. So it's basically just requesting an action item next week and we would vote at that point.
Timelines?
You could do it in July. I mean, you could have the conversation in July as long as I have an answer in July.
Is there any, do you have any opinion as to impact of that? You know, what the consequence is of having it now versus July, or is there no concern either way?
There, I mean, there's no concern for me. I of course want the board to make as an informed decision as humanly possible. If the decision isn't going to change because then the sooner the better. I mean, it's just one less thing, but get the information you need. I have until sometime in July to know.
Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess it's up to the board. I'm, I'm ready to make, you know, a decision on it, so I don't know if people need more time or not, you know.
Anybody else who wishes to speak to it?
Are we voting today?
Just for, just for agenda item.
We're just saying if it's going to be.
When it's.
It doesn't make good sense if there's not support to put it on. If it's iffy, leave it on. If, if not, I'm just saying, I don't sense a lot of yeses, but I could be wrong, that's my perspective.
Even if it's not next, added next week, then it would, it's July, or is it?
Or it could be June 27.
Or it could be June, the end of June, and that's still, and so then it's still compiling information and then it would be an action item end of June.
Yeah. And if it were to pass, I think the sooner you decide would help in planning for the administration and the implementation.
Right. So is there more that people would want to know before making a decision? Or are people feel comfortable with what we have?
I feel comfortable with what we have.
Do you see any benefit to having a discussion of, of the pros and cons at a, at a business meeting?
I think the benefit would be then it's top of awareness and people have heard it before.
And, and how the, how the board is making decisions for tax implications if they're not necessarily paying attention to a work session, if it never comes up.
And just for clarity's sake, if you, if you, it works like the OPEB piece, it wouldn't impact the 1920 school year, it would impact the 2021 school year. From a planning standpoint, Mike, you wouldn't see anything for next year changing?
Yeah. It just is a question if, if it benefits the public to hear our justification for it rather than never showing up on an action item.
I would agree with that, but.
That's a thought.
If you have strong feelings, address the superintendent or myself or Shelley or Bob because I, I think what you're saying too, we don't want it necessarily to fall off the radar. There are additional opportunities in the second meeting in June or in July that could be revisited.
Yeah, thanks. That's a good comment as well as yours. Are you, and I'm not, are you suggesting or is this a consideration to have a discussion, pros and cons discussion at, say, next week and then action item? Is that what you're, or are you saying both in the same time? I'm just trying to grasp what.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, it could be an action item wherein we have a discussion about the, the pros and cons at a, at a business meeting and then take a vote.
Yeah. The one danger too is that because this can be potentially holding a carrot out to people if there's support, let's do it. If there's not, then.
Yeah, good point.
Kind of false hope. And I think there are pros and cons to that as well.
Which, so to that point, could we just mention it as we're talking about OPEB?
Sure.
It's part of our conversation so people know that. We've talked about this at a work session and didn't come forward at this time.
Give it some thought.
Can we just get some clarification? So the amount that we'd be looking at, it says on here 700,000? Is that, is that the maximum or is that?
It's, it's greater than that, but it's not 800,000 based on our student.
Okay, so that's approximate number.
I think Bob said 728.
So I had also my notes, 428, but that was for something else, I guess.
Well, that would be, that would be the maximum, right? We could, we could approve less than that, right? We, we could approve a number that.
Barbara wants to. I just want to say, you had finished to give it some thought, but don't think too long because the draft agenda and the board package was just worked on starting Tuesday.
Right, but if we put the.
I think until Monday. And I just know.
I have a little bit of extra.
But we could put it on for a later date as well.
You can, but I need to know whether it's on or off. Right now I have it on the draft. I mean, and that changes the whole position of items on that, a very long agenda.
Yeah. And this is what I kind of sense is, one, let's not have it on if there, if strong feelings it ought. If strong feelings it ought to be aired or whatever, contact Denise, myself, Shelley, et cetera.
You're saying take it off for now?
Yeah, but for now, I would say that's what I'm sensing. But again, that's not forever. I mean, that's.
Answer your question, Sarah, it would be up to $91 per pupil of the October 1 count for next year.
Okay.
So that would be the fall of this one, right? Yeah. Be the fall. So whatever we come in at, those two, whatever you decide as a per pupil increase, up to $91, then that 700-ish figure would be whatever our October 1 count is multiplied by that chosen number that you have.
And is the 400,000 what we're right now supplementing from the general fund? Or is that?
That is what is coming out of the combination of achievement integration and the professional development this year.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So that's the amount we would actually be like to cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else? We've got approximately 25 minutes left. Okay? Anything else we need to cover?
Well, do we want to talk about the survey and what we think about? I mean, it sounds like sooner that we would want to do something soon as part of the Limerick Facilities Plan.
And is there a price attached? And how much is that?
Pretty large price.
Are we talking about the, what are we talking about?
No.
To do an atmospheric survey?
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, okay. I thought you were going with.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Guide posts or whatever he said.
Okay, so there is a hefty price?
About 15,000 probably.
Okay.
For Morris Lothman to do that work.
We did have some money set aside.
Yeah, we did, yeah. We have some money set aside in a budget, knowing that that might be something that you might want to do. It seems like after, you know, we know this anyway, but especially after what Peter had said, is doing that before you do too much other work. Because you're, you know, after yesterday, the community engagement group talked a lot about how do we expand this group? Well, if you get something back saying, nope, timing isn't going to be right, then you probably aren't going to want to get that group going as quickly. Hence, for the rest of the board yesterday, Judy Hoskins from Cunningham Group had shared that it would be good for the board to have an idea of what they might want to go for time-wise because how she would facilitate the group. If we do new enrollment reports, all those kinds of things are costs and you don't want to have to do them twice. You want to, you know, get it right the first time if you can, so.
So, and I think what you're saying, lead off with this guardrail or atmospheric test or survey run right now.
And is money set aside already in the budget?
That comes out of yours probably.
We.
I think it's Chris.
We have some. Barb's going.
But good thought though.
She's the winner.
Lucky.
So do you want us to go ahead and work with Peter to talk about how that would happen?
I think so. Is that?
I think so too.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's almost imperative.
Yep, makes a ton of sense.
And they have so much history.
Sorry, Carissa.
And then do they tell us what the survey questions are prior to send? Do we have any input as what you might want a question to be or how does that work?
They'll sit down and create kind of a, we'll create a draft and then maybe one of the things you might want to have it do is come to either you at a work session or could come to Community Engagement Group. We can send it all to all of you and you could give us individual feedback, but.
Right, Barbara's suggestion too, just having done this before, if you had some ideas specifically that you were looking at, you gave that to us in advance, then we could work with him and see where it fit. They have, they've been doing this for a long time, so they have pretty solid questions that they ask based on what we're trying to work on. But if there's things that are missing or if there's something else you want to ask, we can try to figure out a way to add that as well.
I think it'd be a good idea, at least, at the least, I think perhaps meeting with the chair and the superintendent and the vice chair and Bob as well as yourself to take a look at that as well.
Maybe rather than questions, it might be a good idea going a step broader. What do you want to, what's something you want to know about? Because then we can let them, to your point, they may have a question that gets at that type of thing.
And that's what's nice about working that way because they have questions that have been tested, that they know work and are getting to what we need to get to. So I think that would be helpful is if we could get that information on the front end, then have them create a draft that we can share and get some feedback.
And I think there are some things that are sui generis, one of a kind for our district.
So, yeah, I think this is, I think we should definitely pursue that. I was just going to say something. The Community Engagement Group yesterday, we met with Cunningham briefly to kind of come out with, just sort of like lay out the plan. And a couple of things that I had talked to Mike about bringing today, just because everyone was peeling off yesterday, I was the one who was still left in the room. I took some notes, but just to share a little bit, they do want to know from us, you know, what kind of timeline we're looking at in terms of if we come up with, if they go through this whole process and come up with a plan that involves a bond, what kind of timeline are we interested in? Do we think we can do? So maybe the survey could inform that decision. But I think today, what we learned today, we have a lot to think about before we sort of figure that out. I kind of know where I think we should go with it, but you know, we have to work on this together, so we, you know, got to do that. They want to know something sooner rather than later. And like Denise said, you know, it's kind of depends on how much work, how hard we work right now trying to push forward into the summer and stuff like that. I feel like because of the space questions that we all know about, it is kind of timeless of the essence and I personally feel like we need to kind of go, but that's just me. So something to think about. We talked about changing the name of the group from whatever anybody else has been calling it, which is any number of different LT, combinations of LTFs and Ms and Ps, to Community Design Team, which I like. This organization that's going to come up with this process is going to be called a Community Design Team. And they are going to be, Carissa's going to be working on trying to connect with some expertise in the community from some of the city representation, perhaps Chamber of Commerce, not to say too much about that, but we will be expanding that group and filling it with people who have specific expertise in specific areas that will help inform the process. I think initially we thought there would be like this core group of people that would kind of go through the process and then there would be subcommittees. That's not how this is going to look. As they go forward, it's just going to be all the work done, all the people in one room for like all day, working through, coming up with something and then presenting that out over time. So anyway, I don't know if I sort of said that clear enough, but, and then the other thing I just wanted to say to all of you, that we made it, we, all of us, Shelley and Jen and I all made it very clear to them that the board is interested in lots of feedback. We want to be kept apprised of every step of the way, what's going on. And they plan to share something with the board every time they've had one of these community feedback meetings. But they said, we'll just make sure we are really, really good about sharing as much as we possibly can with the board as often as we can, you know, and just really keep us all up to date. Because I know we're all really, really interested in, you know, this process, we're excited about it. We have a lot of questions and I think it's going to be a really interesting and fun process.
Do you want to mention about the interviews with the board members that they want to do?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. So they want to start, sort of kind of like the guide rail conversation, having the survey, they felt it would be really helpful to them to talk to each individual board member for maybe a half an hour or how, you know, I think it was a half an hour, an hour, whatever. So they are going to be scheduling, I think Barb will probably be reaching out and scheduling time with each one of us individually, just with them and us, we get to share exactly where we're at and what our hopes and dreams are, what we think should happen, what we, you know, concerns, whatever we have to share with them, we're going to have a chance to do that individually, one at a time. And then they said that when they go to meet, for that first community feedback experience with the whole team, they'll be sharing some of that information with that group. So kind of like a guardrail from the board.
And then have they had a chance to go to the different schools to see?
They will.
Okay.
Yep, they will.
Are those meetings going to be open or public?
Yes, they will be open, but I think we kind of decided they're not going to be videotaped. So anybody can come and they often do, they said they often do have people just sort of sitting on the sideline watching. When they've done this many, many, many times, there often are people just kind of wanting to see how it works because it is kind of fun. But, yeah, open but not videotaped.
And I would just add to that too, that all of the materials and resources that are being shared with that group are often, we create a website where all of that lives too, so the public can see all the same documents that that committee is looking at. So that's just another way we can be accountable throughout it.
Yep.
Are you going to have a specific or a consistent meeting place like here or so the public kind of knows?
We actually didn't talk about that.
We didn't get that far.
So I don't really know. Yeah, I think that'll probably.
I'm sure they will.
Next meeting, yeah.
We discussed a lot of things, the meeting went over the time because we just flushed out a lot of things, which was good.
And they are very experienced in.
Yeah, they definitely know what they're doing.
Thing to do, so.
And I have to say, they mentioned they're very, very excited to be working with Stillwater. Very excited. So I think we talked a lot about how engaged our community is and we were like, you know, get ready, you guys. We have a very involved, very engaged, connected community. And two of the people that John and Todd both were like, yeah, we really, really appreciate that. Like, that's helpful. I'd much rather have a super engaged community that has a lot of questions and concerns or whatever because that helps inform the process rather than a community that's just like, okay, well, whatever you want, you know. It's much more interesting and fun when people are engaged and they are asking questions and sharing ideas, so it's exciting, yeah.
If we, I mean, I think everybody's kind of on the same page about the survey, how quickly can that happen after we vote?
We'll have to talk. We'll have to talk to them about what their schedule is. I know it usually takes a little bit of time back and forth just getting the survey questions where we want and then it's when they can schedule it. It seems like we've done it in a month or two before. I don't think we've ever done anything like within a week or two, so it does take a little bit of time.
Okay. What else we got?
I think just an update for you. As we move into the next meeting, the city of Oak Park did give us permission to have the buses in that parking lot until essentially that operational week in August. Just so you know, as we move forward, you'll see agenda items, but that is the latest at least from Oak Park through mid-August.
And how many of our buses can they fit?
I have it in the plan.
You don't need to say, is it most?
Uh, yeah.
Awesome.
Could probably fit two.
I could probably fit two north of town.
In a room space.
Anybody who's got a big backyard, contact Kristin.
Don't tell Mark.
Anything else that we have?
I think Barb wanted to meet about graduation.
Yes, she does. So we can fit it underneath the 12, so. Board members stick around for a little practice for graduation, et cetera. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I think we're adjourned.[1384.23]